For the first time since I've been on the budget, Nick is here in a new role. So, welcome to Nick, to our merry band. And I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
Well, thank you very much. It's really a pleasure to be here. And I guess for the record, I don't have my mask on because this is a working lunch and I'm eating at the same time here. So, thank you for the welcome. It's great to serve you in a new capacity. It's my first time attending and participating in a mid-year budget update. So, I really look forward to it. We have a lot to discuss this afternoon, really a robust agenda. And as I understand it, maybe one of the most robust agendas that you've had in many years with a lot of great topics to discuss. We'll start in just a couple of minutes with our commissioner comments discussing some of their priorities now and into the future. We'll move into an update. We'll talk about the reappointment process, an update from our finance department on the overall budget, and then we'll move into a whole range of topics for the rest of the meeting today. One of the highlights that we'll point out is that your meetings in six months or so when we prepare the FY 2223 budget is that you will see four new department heads. So, I'll highlight each of the new department heads, just as I kind of go through the department summaries during my update.
Are you saying there's four new departments, since you're the county administrator? Or no, different people in those departments?
Different people in those departments, four new department heads, yeah. Just different people. So, with that, thank you. I look forward to a great meeting today, and I'll turn it over to our Chair DeBoe.
Yes, thank you very much, everybody, for joining us. I do want to congratulate Nick LeLak. So, he's the Budget Officer at this time. That's the official title. So, I mean, this is the budget creation process. Thank you, the public members, for joining us. The longevity and the knowledge is just wonderful at the table here. This is a public meeting for the world to be watching. Hopefully, people are paying attention to this process. A couple of specific content items for me. So, I'm kind of diving right to some of the content we'll talk about today. So, we do have room tax, unallocated revenue, like this room tax fund is growing. This annual budget process is the place where we'll start to talk about, I mean, there'll be a proposal. We don't need to make that our content as much today, but a proposal for, since there's dollars there, what are we going to do with them? So, I'm just pointing out that, you know, this is where it'll mature a few times through the budget process, kind of publishing in July 1st of next year. But also, as I say, for my fellow commissioners, if we decide to, you know, write a check for X out of that fund, it's available. So, transit room tax, unallocated revenue is a topic that's coming around. Also, the tax rate last couple of years, you know, I thought, oh, here we go, we're going to have to raise it. And then we didn't last year. Again, we have growth happening, expected growth, valuations going up. So, it's really exciting to be able to be in that spot again. So, I'm not even saying what the answer is yet this year, but celebrate what we did last year. And then one other item that fits right into that tax rate is the courthouse funding. You know, that's a big ticket item coming down the way. So, that may be the place where we do, that I may support, you know, a tax rate change in support of a full faith and credit effort for that tax instead of going to the voter. So, I mean, those are big choices that we'll be working through here. So, just sharing that information, there's a legislative committee organized by the AOC Association of Oregon Counties about courthouse funding. And Deschutes County doesn't fit in there for the direct funding of our project because we're in a good spot. We don't have a failing facility. We don't have seismic needs like some other places. But there's also this court facilities general funding, you know, like a project, a subline of our project. We could probably get some money from the legislature, which would be minimal relative to the total cost of this thing. But I figure we'll keep asking as they do this process. So, those are my thoughts to get us going today. Other commissioner comments? Commissioner Chang, please.
Well, as I look to the next budget year, there are a few things that I'm really interested in seeing us do above and beyond the regular business. Capital projects are definitely one of them, and besides the courthouse expansion that Commissioner DeBoe mentioned, we also really need to be mindful that we've got that parole and probation building expansion coming up. We're working on a North County campus that'll serve health services and more. And so, one of my questions as we look at our financials today is going to be, how well positioned are we to address those substantial capital construction needs? It's really exciting to see, you know, looking ahead at some of the charts that Greg is going to show us today, it's really exciting to see how much the revenue streams of the county have grown just in the last two, three, four years. And that gives me, makes me feel pretty optimistic that we will be able to do those capital projects. But also, it reminds me that those revenues are growing because our population is growing very rapidly, and we need to think about providing additional services to people. And services is more than just a building. Services is human resources and strategic planning and, you know, implementing priorities as well. I'm particularly interested in health services, you know, and what we'll be doing in health services in the next year. You know, this past year and a half of the pandemic has really demonstrated to everyone that the health services that counties provide are extremely important to the functioning and well-being and, you know, baseline operation of a community. Couple of other things I'm interested in exploring of the county, being able to invest in are affordable housing. We have some real opportunities to use American Rescue Plan funds in the near, near term to make investments in affordable housing. But in the longer term, I'm interested to see if there are ways that the county can play a role in adding to the capital stacks that are needed to build more affordable housing in our community, affordable and workforce housing in our community. When we talk about the transient room tax revenues that we've got, I have a particular interest in seeing if we can use some of those funds to invest in recreation infrastructure in the county, because in my mind, that's the golden goose, you know, that because we have all these great recreational amenities in Deschutes County, people come here and they spend money, and we get transient room tax revenue. And so, it makes some sense to me to invest some of that transient room tax revenue into the amenities that keep people coming here, so to keep feeding the golden goose. Those are just a couple of priorities and interests I have going into this budget cycle. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I'm truly concerned about inflation in our country. You know, the CPI last month was 6.8%. People, the groceries, your gas, and then I'm also seeing the Wall Street was talking about rent. We are so impacted here with our workforce housing and hearing about the different ways that that happens, who actually steps up and helps with workforce housing? It seems to be, there's not much done, really, for workforce housing. And when you go out to a restaurant, if you can find that it's open, that's the first problem, or it's not open for lunch, or it's only open five days a week now, but everyone is so short of employees. And I'm not just talking about service employees, I'm talking about other employees, I'm talking about healthcare workers that need a house to live in. So, I really, really hope that maybe with room tax revenue, we can make some dent in that workforce housing, really. We've got to, I just worry about those small businesses in Deschutes County that will not be open in another year because they've gone down to, like the childcare that we just lost, they were down to three employees. Wayne Lowery's childcare was down to three employees, 49 childcare spots, and they couldn't stay open. I mean, this is really horrible news. I had suggested to Wayne, Wayne, why don't you have the parents all work, you know, a day a month to keep the facility open? And he goes, Patty, you've got to do background checks. That takes months. So, anyway, it was really sad to hear that story, but it's all part of, we've got to get more people working, and people need to come here and want to work and make their housing a bit more accessible. Someone I know who's a gas station manager in Bend, the other day said, oh, my gosh, she had a fabulous story. He actually got to move into a three-bedroom apartment that was $1,600 a month. They were in like a one-bedroom. And, you know, we need to, I need to hear more of those stories. How can we really help workforce? So, anyway, I know we've got a lot of huge projects coming up, but I do worry about keeping our small businesses going for the future. If you have to cut your menu down to four items and you only have three people working, it's really, it seems like it's just getting smaller and smaller, and where will they be next year? So, what can we do to help those people? And, you know, we are, we have a lot of wonderful service industry people in Deschutes County, and how do we do more to help them? So, you know, we, our revenue is just unbelievable from our room tax. So, I do believe that we need to help turn that around, and, you know, maybe this next year will be the year that Sun River does their building, that they got a special permit for, maybe it actually costs out for them, you know? But we need to make it as affordable as possible so they can follow through with that.
Thank you. So, we have back to you, Nick.
Thank you. I was just going to say, we still have a few more minutes. We have the reappointment process, but I would just offer Chair DeBoe, if any of our budget committee members have any comments, just since we have a few extra minutes before we move into that.
Just to fill, golden goose is Sun River. And if you didn't have Sun River, you'd lose two-thirds of your room tax. If they incorporated, you would be up shit creek. And I think the budget committee and it's the board, look at Sun River, see if we can assist them with their safety. And I'm not against the recreation, I agree with you, Bill. But I tell you, Sun River doesn't, at least they haven't in the past, they haven't, they are such a benefit for this county. And if we can be of assistance to them, I know we can't cover all the costs, maybe we can be a team player with them. And one-time money. Yeah, we've got an ongoing expectation.
They're working on getting a set number. I talked to Debbie Baker about it the other day, and they are working on that shortly.
Yeah, I think it's more than appropriate. But.
In the earlier conversations, we had, we had one recent conversation about, you know, the transient room tax revenue and just, there were some preliminary ideas that came out. But one of the ideas was for our communities that are high tourism attractors, investing in other kinds of infrastructure besides recreational infrastructure might be appropriate. I mean, you know, when you think about police and fire services, that's kind of, you need, you absolutely need a certain level of police and fire services to be able to support that level of tourism activity out in Sun River, so it makes a.
Their activities can be directly associated with tourism, I imagine, substantially.
I think that's a great connection.
The number Debbie gave was, I think, between three and six million is what, that they were going to ask for us.
Now, that's a lot better investment than a whole dragger.
We haven't even got there yet.
I know.
And, yeah, any other?
You know, just looking through the materials was appreciated, getting ahead of time. With that, some, just a couple of questions that I will have will be around some of the assumptions and projections going forward, making sure that we're not presuming that the last year or two are actually normal, and you project off of these really odd things. You know, if you recall the, like, transient room tax, the presumption was it was going to fall like a rock because nobody, you know, with COVID and all of that, and instead it went the opposite direction. And continuing to project those kinds of growth rates may be a little aggressive as a thought. Relative to inflation and all of that, I just saw the note that labor contracts around, you know, 1% to 3%, and how does that fit in a conversation when you have CPI over 6%? And again, you know, hopefully that isn't the norm with that. And then, let's see, what other note do I have? Always interested in the great health insurance rates and all of that here and how that reserve works and what we've been talking about for the past few years and working to reduce some of that large reserve, if that's the right answer. It's my only comment.
Any thoughts, Bruce?
No, not right now, thanks.
Okay, very good, thank you. I think we're going to, we'll discuss a lot of these topics over the course of the next several hours together and certainly beyond. So, with that, let's turn our attention to the reappointment process. For those that may not be watching, that may be watching online or that are not familiar with the Budget Committee, state budget law requires an equal number of citizen members to the governing elected officials that serve on our county's budget committee. So, that means we have three county commissioners and three members of our budget committee. Our three appointed citizen members serve three staggered terms. Bill Anderson, your term ends here in just a couple of weeks on December 31st of '21. Mike Myers' term expires at the end of next year, 12th, December 31st of 2022, and Bruce Barrett's on December 31st of 2023. So, with Mr. Anderson's term expiring at the end of this month, and he's expressed an interest in serving, again, in serving as a reappointment, that's certainly the discussion for the Budget Committee. If you wish to discuss the reappointment, and if so, then we would just need a motion and a vote to approve the reappointment. So, with that, I'll turn it over.
So, for clarity, is this a vote of the commission or the other five members?
Of the commission?
The commission.
So, of the three county commissioners, yep. Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you very much, Bill, for joining us and, you know, coming up to speed, you know, over a couple of, I remember when I got started, I'm like, wow, how many things do we get to see at this table, you know, the whole big picture? So, I'm, you know, very supportive of reappointing you. I'll make a motion or if there's any other discussion.
I'll move to reappoint Bill Anderson.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded officially. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang. And Chair votes yes. There you go, officially done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is that for five years, or how many years does it get reappointed?
Couple more meals at least. Yeah, good campaigning.
Is this your, is this your second term, Bill?
It seems longer than that. Yeah, it must be my second term.
I think maybe it was, you started on a partial term and then.
Oh, and then, yeah.
You got reappointed.
Yeah, because I was thinking it was around four years that I'd been on.
Great, well, thank you very much. We're ahead of schedule by about 15 minutes, so, but our finance department is ready. Greg Mudd, our chief financial officer, our CFO, will lead us off, so take it away, Greg.
Can I have 15 more extra minutes? I can talk?
No.
No. Somebody will use it today.
Well, you can if you want to, but we won't listen.
So, before we get going, I want to introduce some of the other faces in the room and some that you know and maybe one that you don't know, but behind me is Dan Emerson. You know Dan because we've worked through the budget process in the past. Dan's our budget manager. And new to our office is Betsy Tucker. She's our senior analyst. She just started a week ago, two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, and she's, and she's already done amazing, amazing things, and part of that she'll show you a little bit later. So, super happy to have her on board. She comes to us from Ben Parks and Rec, and before that, the city of Ben, all in a budget analyst. Anyway, it's great to have, it's really great to have the additional help, and the budget committee and the board last year supported adding the position to help us with ARPA and then eventually with budget and decision support related activities moving forward. So, thank you very much. Okay, in terms of the agenda, we are on, and I'm not sure, I'm going to try to, there we go, there's the budget committee update. Today's topics, we're going to, at least for this first section, is county finance update for fiscal '21, '22. The budget assumptions, the budget calendar, that'll be later in the agenda today, but it's all underneath the same PowerPoint presentation. So, rolling into the county finance update. So, you've all seen these graphics before, but I think there's some value in returning to them once a year and just checking in to see how we're doing and if anything's changing. So, this graphic here, the blue bars, which are growing extremely, at a rate much faster than those two lines, that's our market, that's our value assessed, our market values. And there's a couple of bullet points down to the right that show that we're growing on average since 2014 at over 11% per year. So, when you convert those down to our assessed value, which, again, our assessed value, the state, state law caps the growth in assessed value to 3% on existing properties plus new construction. And a couple of the lines there, I actually should, I can't quite see it, but the two lines, one is our, the orange line is our county-wide rate, that's the one that our property taxes are based on for the general fund. And then, the sheriff's unincorporated is the yellow. Those are just a couple of points to show you the growth in the assessed value for those two markers over the same period of time. Again, they don't grow as fast because they're only growing at about 5% to 5.5% per year, but they're still growing. And again, that's the 3% statutory rate plus new construction.
Greg, is it reasonable to assume, like it says, 5.7 average year, you take 3% off and so the new construction is 2.7?
Yep, that's a good ballpark, yep. Thank you. Good clarification. So, for fiscal '22, the budget year we're in right now, we had, we assumed a 5.4% growth in the assessed value, and the assessor just tells us now that it came back at 5.58. So, our budget estimates are a little conservative, they're coming in a little bit higher, which is right where we want to be. We'd rather have it be that way a little bit than the other way. And next slide. This is a little bit of an eye chart, at least on the screen, but this is a summary table of the tax levies in the county. Some of these are, would be considered tax levies that are as-if a department, they act as a county department, and they're, it's.
Page three.
So, for example, the county permanent rate there at the top, the authorized rate is $1.28, and you can scroll down and see there's 911 and the countywide law enforcement and whatnot. So, if you look at the items that are underneath, that we sort of think of as a county department, none of them are, or all of them are below the permanent rate, the permanent authorized rate. So, you can see 911 is 36 cents versus a permanent rate of 43. The countywide law enforcement, the cap there is $1.25, it's at 105. And as you remember, last year, we reduced that from 108 to 105. So, that was a step down. Sheriff wanted to do that. So, the point here is that there's room and we have room in our existing levies, and we've actually reduced them over the last few years, so there's some capacity there. The next graphic is actual property tax collections. So, you take those tax rates I just showed you and the assessed value on the previous graph, and it turns into these numbers here. And again, you would expect that the growth in our collections is growing at a rate that's similar to the growth in assessed value. I think one of the interesting components of this graph is, it's a little bit noisy, but I'll try to calm it down a little bit here for you, is if you look at the blue, the blue line is just simply the rate of change from year to year. So, as we were coming out of the recession back in nine, or we were going into the recession, 9, 10, 11, you see the rate of change in property tax collections was dropping dramatically. So, we have this huge reduction spike, it turns into a V, and then as we're coming out of the recession, it grew dramatically up where it peaked at the rate of change around 2016. And since then, and this is what finance people like to see, is stability. So, since then, you've seen, you see some variation in the rates, but it's not the big drop or the big increase, it's more stable. There'll be a little graphic we'll show you later when we talk about assumptions moving into FY '23. But that's the message there, is we have, our revenue year to year is more stable. It has been for the last several years, but we're going to project that moving forward And a similar message on development revenue, this is a great graphic that comes from data from Sherri Pinner, and you all know Sherri, she does a good job with this sort of thing and helps us keep track of the data in community development. But again, you see the rate of change in development revenues, and again, it dropped off significantly as a result of the recession back a few years ago, and then it climbed out of it very steeply as well. And then the rate of change has sort of stabilized down around where we would consider something to be a reasonable growth looking forward is, you know, 5%, 4%, 6%, somewhere in there. Even in an economy that's growing as fast as ours, we would think that we'd want to be in that stability range towards the end.
Greg, so I know that our community development department has felt some significant staff strain in the last year, and we've done some catching up on that. I mean, this, this chart shows, I guess, development activity sort of leveling out at a very high new level, but we've been experiencing these staffing kind of strains and shortages. Is that just sort of, we're still catching up to kind of the currents, what is the current scale of development activity per year, or?
Yeah, and Nick might be able to elaborate on this a little bit more, but the way I look at it is the, when our staff, we're having a challenge with vacancies and staffing shortfalls, and this is across the county, we'll, in some of Nick's updates, almost more than half of our departments mention vacancies and staffing shortfalls. So, in that terms, instead of maybe, I would say it's more falling behind in our ability to keep up versus not keeping up with, having the revenue growth trying to reach that, we're just falling behind in our ability to keep up. So.
Because of recruitment challenges.
Because of recruitment challenges, yeah. Yeah. But on this graphic here, if you look at the, if you look at the last couple of years, 20, 19, 20, 21, you can see, instead of this steep growth in revenue, it's starting to flatten out a little bit and something a little bit more reasonable, just at the top there. Now, when you look to '21, it does spike up a little bit, so we'll continue to watch this over time. Anything you want to add?
Well, I would, I would just offer that the community development department has been playing catch-up since coming out of the Great Recession. We budgeted conservatively every year, and every year we exceeded expectations, and many years, that was on the backs of staff who worked nights and weekends to catch up because we were always so concerned as a department that's really dependent on fees that if we do take that downturn, that we're going to be back to where we were in the Great Recession at some point, and that's very painful. And so, staff, we continued to staff up, but it was always kind of a bit behind where that growth curve was. And so, I think the department is in really good shape now, finally achieving the staffing levels that it's, that it's needed. And in building in particular, they have the revenues to support it. The state changed the building valuations last spring, and that really increased the revenues significantly. And building didn't increase in fees at all this past year. Planning and other divisions did because they've been, been behind the curve a bit on, on fees. So, hopefully that helps. But yes, it's also been some real staffing challenges in terms of finding and recruiting staff for several positions.
What do you mean by the state changed building values?
The state, the state changes how they value buildings, and so, and that has a direct relationship to the fees. So, the fees for building, like on square footage, and I can't recall the specifics of it now, but they change how much, effectively how much we can, what the value is for building a square foot of a building, for commercial or residential or whatever it may mean. And that then translates into higher fees.
So, those rates are all set by the state, whether it's Deschutes County, Baker County, or City of New York?
We set the fees, but they set the building valuation, basically how much, on average, it costs to build a square foot of a building, of a commercial building. average, it costs to build a square foot of, of a building, of a commercial building.
And their home state might deny it.
Yeah, well, the state, the state, the state, I don't know if Sherri's on here, she and/or Randy, I'm sure is not on here, but the state effectively sets the, the valuation for buildings, for what, for, for building permitting purposes. And so, if our fees are at, at one level, and they, and the state continues to increase the valuation, then our building fees automatically have, have increased to, to cover that cost.
And the state sets the valuation of a building, is that, is it remotely close to what the assessor sets?
That's a good question. I'll, I'll get back to you on that. I don't know the answer of, of that.
Do you want to just pull it out of the script?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next graph, next page in your packet is Room Tax History. This is a graphic I've, I share from year, year over year, and it's also part of the, will be part of the Room Tax Update, so I just want to touch on this really briefly, because we'll get into more details a little bit later in the day. But again, the, what I just want to point out is a couple of things. If you look at the black line, that's just the rate of change. You can see Room Tax revenues declined post, or during the recession, then climbed back out again. Then we had a few years of stability there, and then COVID hit, and the increase has been significant. We'll talk about that more too, a little bit. Other than that, you see, the orange line is just the tax rate, and there was, I don't know if you can see it in your, in your papers there, but in 2014, there's a slight little blip, and that was a, the last 1% that we added to Room Tax Collections. And Video Lottery, just real quick here, this is, this is an interesting graphic. So, the, the orange bars are the amount of video lottery we collect on an annual basis. We, we made some changes in how we were booking these, this revenue. Instead of on a cash basis, we're booking them now on a accrual basis. Generally, year over year, it didn't matter, but it caused a, a bit of a spike, and that's why you see that 2021 increases, because we received cash, video lottery cash, in 2022, but we needed to accrue it back to 2021. But if you take that out, if you take that one blip out, you'll notice the little graphs to the side, that there's a nice linear curve in our video lottery collections. And these are funds that largely fund our economic development, the commissioners are all really familiar with it. There's a couple of times a year when Laura Scundrick will come back, come to you and, and propose, present to you some opportunities for economic development. And at over 10% a year, that's a, that's a sizable revenue growth for that piece. Okay, County Health Benefits Trust. There's a couple of graphics here. This one is simply showing the ending fund balance, which are the bars, yellow bars, and the claims costs, comparison between the two. So, you can see for a long, there's no revenue shown in here, it's just our major expense and our ending fund balance. So, the third piece here that we're not talking about directly is revenue. So, you can see that the, in about 20, what is that, 2019, the fund balance peaked, and I know there's been conversation about managing the fund balance in the Health Benefits Reserve for quite a while, and how do we bring that down into a policy level that's a little bit more manageable? And so, that was, at about that time, we started, well, didn't start, but that's when I started, so that's my history, is, is, is developing some plans moving forward to slowly bring that fund balance down. And I think Eric or Kathleen, if she was on, she would say, you know, that needs, that's somewhere in the probably $8 million range. And of course, as we get bigger and inflation impacts us more, that might affect that policy level balance, but for right now, you could, you would think that we would need to be somewhere in that $8 million range. So, you can see, at the end of '22, our estimate, we're still at probably $13 million.
Greg, could you take, let's say, $6 million of that invested in courthouse construction and have the county pay the fund back?
So, we did look at that, we looked at that actually, whether or not we had the ability to invest in the PERZ site account and take advantage of the match back a couple of years ago. And it's very limited in our use, but just like an, I believe, just like an insurance company would do, you can invest it in other activities, yeah, so.
But we were going to pay with the bonds, 4%. Maybe we do that and get 2.9%.
I, I believe there's an option for us to do something like that, yep.
How flexible, I mean, how broad are our options for, for the use of that, those funds? I mean, are they...
They're pretty, they're pretty narrow, the way they're set up. And so, what we've decided to do so far is just to manage the, the rate increase to eventually drive, as costs increase, is to hold those, the revenue side of it static and slowly increase that, so it erodes that fund balance down to a, a policy level. But, but there are options, investment options, as any insurance company would have, that we could invest those funds.
Like, once or twice recently, the idea of building employee housing has come up? Is this, is that, is that within the scope of eligible uses of these funds?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, but as an investment, I think, I think an insurance company can invest funds. Now, if they, if it was classified, and I'm speaking way out in the margin right now, if it was classified as an investment that was eligible on the, as an investment underneath the state's insurance commissioner, then the answer would be yes. There's a lot of ifs in that statement, yeah. But certainly, it's certainly worth looking at and being creative.
I want a place to live is pretty foundational to employee health.
Yep.
Just a comment, the, I mean, the PERZ reserve is made up of contributions from Deschutes County Departments, county employees, and dependents on the plan, COIC, and, and their employees as well. So, it's really a combination, and that's part of the reason why those funds are, are very restricted.
Yeah, that's a good point. So, it's not just county department funds in the Health Benefits Reserve, there's other organizations that are participating as well. All right, next...
Question real quick. So, is, has there been any analysis done about the growth of FTE in that plan? As in, if we had 10 more employees, does that raise the, kind of the total cost of the program, fully funded FTE, so they've got their internal charges, but does that bend it up or bend it down, or, you know, if we added 100 employees?
Yeah, so we do look at that. We have a long-term forecast that looks at all of the drivers in the Health Benefits Reserve Fund, and employees are the number one driver. So, we look back at the growth of the county and use that as somewhat of a possible mechanic for moving forward in what the growth will be like. But of course, then there's COVID on top of it, and things have gone a little bit different than that. But we definitely look at FTE growth. And there's a, we assign a cost per FTE on average. You know, we're a large enough of a health plan where most of the time, we can dilute any spikes that would be due to some statistical aberration that would have in something that was a smaller number of base, so.
Well, as I say, maybe this isn't a good concept, but I was just trying to think it through a little. If we ended up with 100 new FTE in a fiscal year, does that, does the health plan scale, does it bend the total cost per FTE up or down a little bit? I mean, is that makes...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I would say, as economies of scale, the bigger you get, you'd think you would drive, you would drive it down, maybe.
Yeah, so there's no real thought on that, there's no rule of thumb on that.
No, it's... The big driver is your experience.
Yeah, exactly.
If you have 100 employees or 1,000, you have shitty experience, you're going to waste it.
Okay, yeah.
It's, it's utilization, which is partially driven by number of FTE.
Got it.
Thank you. Good questions, though.
Even if we add a lot of new staff, still targeting that $8 million range for a reserve level is...
But, but I think at some point, it'll be, we'll have to, we'll have to circle back and have that conversation. As we get bigger, we're going to need a bigger reserve base underneath it.
You're going to need enough for your runout if you go commercial insurance, and the more employees you have, the bigger the runout you're going to get.
So, we'll need to plan for that as we do, as we grow. That's a good point.
And we've also seen that health maintenance is the great investment, you know, that's been 10 years or so with the, the doc and pharmacy efforts locally, and, you know, having that readily available on the top of mind of every employee and covered life has been cost-effective.
Eric, we know, what, what has our experience been?
In terms of claims cost?
Correct.
It's been very good. And, and we also purchase a policy to cover large claims, and so that protects the fund. But really, whenever somebody is, comes new to the organization, says, oh, we need, we need to increase the, the charge to departments, and we say, no, no, trust us, we've been, we've been talking about this for a long time. And in fact, our benefits consultant, at the beginning, recommended that we increase the charges more to, to departments, and after about five years, they've, they've seen how, how we haven't needed to do that.
The experience is like, wherever dollar we put in, how much is paid out. You think that you've been like in the eighties, or 85% experience, right around there, which has been...
Yeah.
And the other thing, Commissioner DeBoeun mentioned, the doc and doc pharmacy, another huge benefit has been the, the health risk assessment, and our employees have really stepped up to participate in that, so that we catch things early and, and get more on the prevention side, because that's a, the best way to control costs is to find things early so that, so that we don't have large claims.
Okay, next graphic is also on the Health Benefits Reserve. This is the forecast side of it. So, this, essentially, the first point I would make is, are the green bars at the bottom, those, that's the, either history, actuals looking to your left, or forecast looking to your right of our fund balance. And so, the goal there is, as we run out in those forecast years, those five years to the right, is that we slowly bring that fund balance down to a policy level. And we do that by essentially carefully managing our expenses, which we already have been doing, and there's benefits for that, lowering our costs because of the structure of the plan. But on the revenue side, which is the blue, the blue line is the revenue side. So, you can see in the forecast years, we're still running a red line, a little bit above the blue line, so we're spending more each of those years than we're bringing in, and that's, that's a decision that we're making during budget, and we're doing that so that it puts some downward pressure on that fund balance. But at some point, we have to start slowly increasing our rates, and we want to make sure we do that very slowly. As you know, a decision that's made in year one of five has much more impact than a decision made in year five of five. So, we don't want, we don't want a big cliff that we have to deal with in year five, because all of a sudden, our fund balance has gone the wrong way. So, very, very slowly, the last couple of years, we've proposed a 0% to 2% increase in rates during budget, and, and we've stayed with 0, just because we keep monitoring this. This year, it'll be the same, 0% to 2% department and employee rate increase, and as we get closer and we look at the end of the year, if we're doing a lot better, then we can push that out a year. So, this is the tool we use to manage this, and you'll see this again over the years.
Well, that next chart...
Yeah, so...
It needs to be in Braille for me.
Yeah. So, the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, this is just a quick update. There's three pages, yeah, there's two and a half pages in your packet on ARPA. I'm not going to go into detail, I'm sure that some of you are worried about that. But I just want to show you, particularly the, the budget committee members, this is the, this is the mechanism we use with the board to work through these requests, these ARPA requests that we're receiving. So, we'll receive requests that come in from the, from a variety of, of sources, and if they're eligible, they go on this list, and based on the guidance we've received from Treasury, and then the board has the opportunity to, to evaluate those, and based on the board values, we've grouped them together and have addressed them kind of as we are moving forward. So, as an example, the, the big group, this says affordable housing on it, if you can read it, it's, it's the second big group on that page. Those proposals, because it's such a large ask and such a large issue in the community, have been pooled together, and we've worked with all of the stakeholders in the community, the experts in the community, to pool these together to say, what kind of return could we expect on an investment? Where do we need to spend this money in the community to get the biggest bang for our buck? This is the proposals they've submitted, and these are the ones that actually are on the board's agenda for Wednesday. So, part of that process is, is in either bringing individual projects for the board to consider, or in these cases, where it's a large issue across the county, we'll bring them together as a group. We did the same thing with childcare a couple of months back. So, this is what's going on with ARPA. This is a, an ongoing project we have, will probably be, will be dealing with this for years. Out of the $38.4 million we were allocated, we've, we've, the board has committed $31.2 million so far. We received half of those funds back in May, $19 million, and we'll receive the second half this coming May, another $19 million. And to date, we, we're issuing contracts now, and I think we have, of those that are approved, three of them have been, have gone out the door, and we're continually working on those to try to catch up.
So, those three, have they received cash?
Not yet.
So, no money's got out the door?
No, no, we have the contract, yeah. We have the contracts out, and I, and we'll probably have the first, the first one this week, fund sent out the door.
And are the, are those contracts being done on a reimbursement basis?
Some will be on reimbursement, some not, yeah. So, and the reason why I say that is there's a, there's a checklist of, that we have to have, so the contractors, the grantees send us back a signed contract, and then a, a risk assessment checklist that's required. And we have to go through that, and based on their response to that, then it determines how we move forward.
Do you have follow-up audits on those?
Oh, yeah, this one will be, this one will be significant, so this will definitely be part of the audit the next couple of years, yep. All right. Any other questions on ARPA? That was a lot.
So, the...
Apologize for the eye test.
The process is to, so your department is handling the flow-through of funds, and also, ARPA is legal creating the agreements and...
So, we have a, we have a template, a contract template, that legal counsel developed for us, and so we're, we've, we've got that in place, and we're using the same template over and over again. And part of it is, because we want to make sure we're doing things the same way, but it's also just more efficient to do that. And so, before the contracts are finalized, it goes back through legal, and they put their stamp on it, and it's recorded just along with any other county contract.
And so, once the funds are dispersed, and some of them are dispersed incrementally, then what's the follow-up process to know that the project happened, or?
So, we typically will ask for a follow, and some of these will want to have, will have periodic revisits to the board. So, for example, you know, what are the outcomes of, and how, so childcare is a good example, because there were some definite markers put out there in terms of what they thought they would be able to get to in the next couple of years. So, they'll circle back and say, you know, here's where our goals were, and here's where we're at now in the process. So, it'll be pretty interesting to see the impact of the significant investment in the community in these areas where we're, we really need some help. And so, I'm looking forward to actually having those returns come back and reporting back to the board.
And I have something really nice to report, that COCC, they're, we invested $125,000 in their program, and just talking to Kent the other day, they're actually adding Spanish and English for their class, for the number of people, and they think they'll be able to have 25 people in their class this next semester, which, you know, that can open their own childcare facility. So, they have, they've taken it even further, and I want to thank them for that. So, yeah, they're getting a great response. Hopefully, more people in the neighborhood can open up childcare.
So, $38 million, there's also administrative fees available, because it's a big project, it's going to go on for many years, and interest is available to kind of stay in that fund and roll through this process also.
That's right.
Yeah. Because this is a big project, a lot of staff and effort.
All right, moving to the next graph, PERZ Outlook. So, PERZ operates on a biennial cycle, and so, we're in the 2123 cycle right now. And what that means in terms of our fiscal years is, is the first year of that biennial cycle is our current fiscal year, so we have the rates, the rates that are in the beginning of the, of the biennial cycle are the same as the second year. So, in other words, what I'm getting at is, the rates for next budget cycle are the same as this budget cycle. So, there will be no change in the rates, those are going to be static from year to year. But what's important to do is to look out into the future and what's going to happen in our FY '23 budget over a year from now. And probably the easiest way to do that, there's a lot of information on this graphic, but if you just pick one of those clusters, look at tier one, tier two, the blue, and these are just the employer rates, there's some... these are just the employer rates, there's some other costs associated with it in terms of, you know, we, we bonded for some PERS, some retirement bonds back years ago, and there's a cost to that. But these are just the rates that come, these are the rates that fluctuate, that come from the state. So the blue bar there, under tier one, tier two, is twenty-one percent, that's the current rate, employer rate, for this fiscal year, and next fiscal year, so that won't change. But every other year, that's not a rate-setting year, is an advisory year. So they come, PERS comes out, their actuaries do a analysis for us, and say, well, if, if it was an actual rate-setting year, here's what your rates would be. It's important to do that, it helps us kind of track where things are going. So, based on the advisory rates that just came out, which was based on the portfolio performance at the end of twenty-twenty, December of twenty-twenty, our rates would go up to twenty-four point five percent. And that's not entirely due to performance, but it's due mostly as PERS moves forward, they change some of the assumptions that are built into developing these rates. The primary, the one primary driver here is that they change their assumed rate, they have an assumed earnings rate that they project out over the lifetime of the liability, and they change that from seven point two percent to six point nine percent. So when you have an earnings reduction projection, the only way to make that up is through a fee increase. So that's why the rates have to go up.
Projected.
Projected.
But that's, bam, between then and now, it's up forty percent, thirty percent. Investment.
Yes, and so, actually.
Which could change.
Sure, yeah.
It's up substantially.
So that's, so that's sort of the bad news of this graph, but the silver lining and potentially the good news is, if you slide one graph bar over to the gray, with a strong performance in the PERS portfolio as of right now, and hopefully by the end of December in a few more days, the projection is, that's going to drop that increase in FY twenty-three down by a couple of percentage points. So, if that does come to pass, if we hold on strong through the end of the fiscal year, we would expect to see about a one point two percent, two percentage point increase in our rates, which is very manageable moving forward. Well, I'm about twenty-five minutes ahead of time.
You don't need those extra fifteen minutes.
No, unless there's any, any general questions, the next, we'll roll into budget assumptions a little bit later in the agenda, but I'll turn it back over to, if you need to roll into Nick's presentation, or take a break, or whatever.
Could we take a ten-minute break? Let's do that.
Um, Mike, I actually had them look.
So Nick, I think we're back to you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. So I have a lot of department updates to provide. The key questions that that we, and thanks to Greg for coordinating with departments on the key questions to share with you are what changes in revenue or expense assumptions have the departments experienced? Have they learned since the Budget Committee approved their budgets about six months ago? So that's kind of piece number one. Piece number two is if there are any issues on the horizon that we could, should begin to think about for fiscal year 2023. So that's, that's going to be the big picture. So I'm going to jump right in. What I'll do is, I didn't watch the video of how Tom did it, but my, my goal will just be to summarize a department and then I'll just see if you have questions and, and if you do, I'll do my best to answer those questions or perhaps Eric, Greg, or our finance team can help, help answer your questions. So let me just jump in with Health Services. Public health revenues will start there. Public health modernization continues to see investments. They've received about a half a million dollars in additional funds this, this year so far. COVID is another big topic to discuss, of course, on everybody's radar. Funds are less than needed that we have due to surges and booster dose rollout. But they have received additional funds. So they've received approximately $500,000, about a half a million dollars in additional funds from federal, state, federal and state funds. I'll, I'll leave it at that. And then about $2 million so far in ARPA funds to address the ongoing pandemic. So COVID remains a big topic and it will be for years. And they've, they continue to ask for additional local funds, additional county ARPA support for, for the pandemic. State funding increases, so the state has continued to, to send money our way for the WIC program, women, infants and children, prenatal care, early intervention and outreach services. And so these are about another half a million dollars have continued to increase. So a lot of revenues coming in to our Health Services Department in terms of public health. Shifting gears to behavioral health, revenues related to services are variable. Current trends indicate that they will be about $900,000 less than budget on major funding sources. And there are a lot of, a lot of details here. So I'm going to give you a couple of these snapshots and you're going to be more familiar with them than I am at this point, but I still want to just share some of these with you. These are my own notes. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, and I've got pages of them, so I'm just kind of capturing some of the highlights from my own.
And then also, so just kind of higher level concept. Budget Officer notes going into the budgeting process, right? So this is December. We're starting off the first of the year. This will be what the departments are telling us. This is our public meeting for that. And then kind of the assumptions going into it. I don't know that we would give guidance here today per se, but this is the snapshot of what we see right now in preparation for the process that's going to give us our budget.
It's, it's both that as well as just kind of what's changed, yes, since, right, right, which really is the platform for us to think about, the foundation for next year's budget. Yep.
And Nick, you were saying $900,000 more or less than projected?
Less than budget on major funding sources. That's, this is for revenues in behavioral health.
So the other health, public health, is getting way more than they ever anticipated. And behavioral health is second canal water.
So the, so the two pieces here would be, that's right. So behavioral health is where I'm going to shift gears to now. So, yeah, so public health, additional funds are very significant across the board. And the punchline for behavioral health is while there are about 900,000 less in revenues, and I'll get to this and just, well, I'll just go ahead and say it now, and this is going to be a theme you're going to hear across many departments. Their expenses, however, are way down. And the, and the theme here is going to be because the vacancy rate is 14% compared to what they budgeted at 5%. So what that means is that personnel costs are projected to be about $3.7 million under budget. So let's go back to the revenues for just a moment. The Certified Community Health Clinic Perspective Payment System, CCBHC, PPS, is tracking about $2.6 million less than budget due to vacancies and an increase in Oregon Health Plan enrollment numbers. Coordinated Care Organization, the CCO funds, however, are projected to be 1.7 million more than budgeted due to the Oregon Health Plan enrollment remaining higher than anticipated through the rest of the fiscal year. Intellectual and Developmental Disability Programs, those funds are up about $1.13 million. So there's a lot of significant changes, both, both pro and con, that we're seeing in, in behavioral health. Now, one topic that I know at least, well, I would, I don't want to say at least one, all, the commissioners are aware of and the Budget Committee maybe as well, is Measure 110. So to this point, an additional $113,000. Total funds are $296,000. So an additional $113,000 in one-time funds have been awarded through Measure 110 grant to support harm reduction activities. In addition, Measure 110, Behavioral Health is partnering with Best Care in co-developing another Measure 110 proposal that will enhance services for substance use disorder, crisis support and homeless outreach support. The proposal is not yet awarded, but could generate an, an additional $1 million.
You got one-time money?
I think this is also one-time money. In both cases.
Do we accept the one-time money? Are we, are we assuming that programs that, that's funding are going to go away when the one-time money goes away?
Well, and that's a good question because it would support 7.2 FTE. So that's a good question, is what, what happens to those 7.2 FTEs? So they haven't awarded it yet, so we haven't made the decision on that. Greg, I don't know if, if you have any more information or, or Eric might have.
I don't specifically on that one ask, but in general, we, the FTEs, when they're established are limited duration FTE. So they're connected to that revenue source.
Yeah, my concern is we're not able to balance the budget now without this stuff. The only reason we're, we're staying afloat is because we got 15% on the bill positions. Accepting more one-time money sounds like we're continuing to dig that hole.
One, one question I would have, so CCBHC, if I understand it correctly, we get, we get funds to fill the gap between what it costs to actually provide a service and what, and what OHP will actually reimburse. And so the more staff we have, the more services we can provide within the CCBHC at the higher, you know, at the make us whole level of, of reimbursement. So if we get more staff and we can do more work and get the whole CCBHC reimbursement, it will mean that, that those additional staff are actually a, a financial benefit as opposed to a liability.
You, you lost me.
You, you gotta have the, it, it's, it's actually more like running a business. You get paid the.
$100,000 upside down now. We get more, we have more stuff to do, but we're only $300,000 upside down.
But if you look at it from that perspective, being down a bunch of staff actually impacts your ability to get all the CCBHC revenue that you have access to.
Because it's on a capitated basis, not on a fee for service. That's what you're saying.
Dan is shaking his head. Can you, can you kind of unpack this for us?
Yeah. So first off, Cheryl Smallman, we can get her on the line for Health Services if, if we want to take more than maybe a couple of minutes on this. But CCBHC, it is a fee for service, PPS, the perspective, the prospective payment. And for some of those positions, Commissioner Chang is right, some positions in Health Services would generate their own revenue above and beyond their cost. Other positions would not. It just depends on what department you are in. Some departments that work with not quite as severe of SPMI, those individuals, they're seeing a lot of them back to back, they would certainly generate enough revenue to cover their cost. Other departments, they're not generating that much revenue, but the PPS payment is, is a very large portion of the Health Services revenue and, and very important. But like I said, we can get Cheryl Smallman on the line if you'd like to know more about that.
I just see a general trend that we get more monies coming in, but then we're still upside down. That's my concern. And so there's a point where the general fund is going to have to bail them out. Is that, would that be a correct assumption?
I'd say we'd have to wait for Health Services' presentation. There's so many factors.
That hasn't been the case so far. I mean, you know, like, the last couple of years, we've been squeezing behavioral health in terms of general fund investment and I mean, they, they, they're still, they're still running at higher and higher levels of, of service provision. The, the other thing I would say about Measure 110 is even though you may get a one-year grant, it sure seems to me like, you know, for better or worse, this is the way that they're going to structure Measure 110 funding for the foreseeable future, taking a big chunk of the marijuana tax revenues and putting it into these, these treatment programs. So even if we get a grant that's only, that only runs for a year, it doesn't mean that that grant won't be available to apply again the next year. And I, I don't know whether that's the case, but we shouldn't assume that this is, you know, one-time money that ends. And, you know, maybe we could ask, you know, we could ask Cheryl about that too, if we wanted to get her on.
Right. And we do have the Health Services mid-year presentations that we'll have later and, and their presentation during the Budget Committee Week as well.
Can you show me in the budget where we have been decreasing funding for behavioral health? Like you just said?
I do not have the finger, the, right in my fingertips.
Transfers in, 8.2 million?
General, general fund dollars into behavioral health two years ago was, was lower than it was three years ago and last year it was, I believe, flat. So.
The transfers, maybe this is the wrong way to look. It just goes, you know, four and a half million, 6.3, 8.5, 8.2. Looks like it's been going up to me.
Are you looking at transfers in?
Yeah, and I don't know if that's general fund.
Well, part of it is, but there's also, if you're looking at just Health Department, there's others, transfers in. For, for example, what was the other example? There were, I think.
TRT.
TRT, thank you.
Environmental health.
Yeah, there were some TRT funds. That was probably a half a million dollars of that amount.
I would be happy to go, I have, I have a little.
My just concern.
I have a little spreadsheet somewhere upstairs and I'd be happy to get you a copy of that.
So let me take a swing at, at what you're, we're talking about right here, and I think this will simplify a little bit. So I look at the, we're talking about this CCBHC revenue. There's, it comes in two pieces. One is a capitated model, which is you get paid on a, a per-member basis, and the other one's a fee-for-service model. And those two, and Dan, correct me if I'm getting off base. Oh, there's Cheryl. I know, I feel like I'm being watched. But those two work in, in a hydraulic. And so the state will set up more of a revenue, what they, I think they've done is moved more of that revenue to a capitated model, which means you get paid by head, you don't get paid by service, you get paid by head, which is increasing that revenue source and potentially decreasing the fee for service. But offsetting all of that is the significant vacancy savings. So I don't think we're ups, we're not upside down in terms of the overall financial picture. We're, we're the other way. We're just, we're, we're struggling to, to hire staff.
I'm just trying to be simple here. I'm just looking at these here where it's being balanced with draining the beginning net from 8.2 to 6.6. State payments going down from 33.9 to 28. Local government payments going down, 824 to 659.
I think you're looking at the overall Health Department.
The overall.
Yeah, we're just talking about behavior right here.
Where's that at?
That's going to be a couple of pages. Yeah.
Let's, Cheryl.
Cheryl, you have anything you'd like to say? Clarify?
Cheryl, my specific question was, can you track for us general fund dollars into Behavioral Health Division over the last three years?
Yes, I can. Um.
How much have they gone down?
Well, specifically, so fiscal year '22, the transfer in is $2.2 million, which is an increase over fiscal year '21, which was $2,360,000.
Oh, and one didn't go down.
Additional $220,000 in fiscal year '22.
And can you go one year, one or two years more back?
Yes, I can. One second.
I thought from last year, last year to the current one, we were flat, but I think it was a drop the year before that.
Yeah, well, I, I was just concerned, Phil, that you said it's been going down where it's been going up.
It has.
It hasn't gone down.
Did it, let, let's see what, let's see what we got for 2019, 2020 or 2019.
Fiscal year '20 for behavioral health was $1.7 million.
It's gone up 700,000.
Is this, is this just general fund, Cheryl?
This is just general fund, yeah. That fiscal year '20 was a decrease from the previous year of fiscal year '19, which was that up as well. I want to say a decrease of $540,000 from fiscal year '19.
Well, the point I just want to make, Phil, it, it's been going up, not down like you said.
If Cheryl gives us the 2019 number, it's quite possible that between 2019 and now, it's flat.
Pulling it now.
Well, if we paid, so we actually spent $2.2 million then in '19, and then we actually spent $2.2 million in '22 from general fund. Is that right, Cheryl?
I'm pulling up 2019 right now. It's loading. Bear with me.
See, we can't find just specifically general fund in here, so.
That's right.
And I have specifically asked about general fund, so that's what I feel like.
Well, I'm just, general fund, that's all.
Fiscal year '19, the transfer in of general fund was $2.28 million, so almost 2.3 in '19, and we're back to 2.3 million in fiscal year '22.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Mike, did you have any more questions?
No, I just. When we get to the, the real budget, it would be nice just to see the general fund. Because I know it's, it's here, but it's just included.
And then, and then our budget documents that we get for, for a Budget Committee hearing, we, it's in there. There is a column just for general fund.
Thank you.
Okay, shall I continue with Health Services?
Well, can I make a comment?
Great.
Moving into this budget. One of the things that we seem to be balancing with is our beginning net working capital, which is kind of going like this. And if that trend is going to continue, then we're really going to have a reckoning maybe in three years when that beginning net working capital is all pissed away and we're really going to have to go into the general fund or make major cuts.
They also have a reserve fund, like Fund 270, which has gone up quite a bit. It's only $15 million.
Oh, fantastic.
But I know Health Services will talk later on about the kind of flexibility that fund, which will be on all sorts of.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm unable to hear very well.
I think we're good, Cheryl.
We're good.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks. Let me know if I'm needed.
Okay, I, I don't have any other significant changes from the department, but a couple of the, the big topics for the preview of the fiscal year '23 budget items are going to be funding the Crisis Stabilization Center for 24/7 operations. So that's on our radar. The Family Connects Oregon and the North County Campus Furniture and Ancillary Remodel Costs. So those are some big things for us to think about going into, into the next budget. I will also share, as I mentioned with you in my opening remarks, we have four departments that will have new department heads for your Budget Committee meetings in about six months, and Health Services is one of those departments. Dr. George Conway will begin service as the county's health officer on, on January 1st of 2022. We will begin a recruitment immediately to replace Dr. Conway as the director for the department and Eric Crop will serve as the interim director during that period. And for those of you that, that may know, of course, Eric's been with, with the county for 14 years and he did previously serve as the interim director for the Public Health Department about a, about a decade ago. So that's one department that you'll see a new director in about six months.
Nick, you mentioned the Crisis Resolution Center?
The Crisis Stabilization Center. Right.
What's, what's the ballpark freight of that ticket going to be?
Uh, well, I'm going to use my, my lifeline again here and refer to Cheryl, if Cheryl's able to help us with that estimate.
Sure. Um, right now we have an unfunded gap of about $1.8 million, but we are working with multiple community partners, including the Coordinated Care Organization, to see if we can close that gap and by how much. So I don't have a specific ask or ballpark figure, but hopefully it's significantly smaller than. ask or ballpark figure, but hopefully it's significantly smaller than that.
Thank you.
A couple of years ago, we actually, I think, gave almost half a million dollars from Central Oregon Health Council, but at my meeting last week, I found out that they weren't happy with our decision-making and they've taken that away from us. So apparently, they've still got funding and hopefully some of that funding will come for the Stabilization Center. Because I mentioned it, I said, you know, I thought that was excellent funding, use of Central Oregon Health Council grants and anyway, yeah.
We still, that was, I know when it started years ago, there's gonna be contributions from the City of Ben Redmond and St. Charles, are they still paying?
St. Charles hasn't paid anything. And they were asked again, I guess. Um, yes, the Sheriff's Office contributes.
I know that.
Yeah, they're big on it.
We all, as, we had, we discussed this with the City of Bend at a joint meeting, I owe them, I owe the city some additional information to, so that they can make their decision about whether they're going to invest in the Stabilization Center this year. And we did, I'm, individually, I met with some people from St. Charles, leadership team from St. Charles, month or two ago, and they're, they don't feel like they're in a position to, to contribute right now.
They got more of this relief money than God had.
Yeah, and they lost pretty much all of their elective procedure revenue for months and months and months.
They got no expenses, they got no staff.
Yeah. I think they're, I think they're.
I just remembered the whole thing was a partnership because it was gonna be a benefit to St. Charles and a benefit to the PDs for Redmond and Ben. And they were gonna be saving money and we're gonna get better service. That's always before someone asks to write a check.
Correct.
But I, I'm, I feel, I feel fairly confident that the City of Bend is going to make a contribution this year. But again, I, it's on me, my bad, that I haven't gotten them the, the additional information.
My recommendation, I don't know if, I think I shared it with you, if, if we have to pony up a substantial amount of money, that is definitely a benefit to all of the citizens of the county and especially law enforcement with City of Ben, Redmond and, and the sheriffs. It should come out of one, the overall tax rate for the sheriff's office.
Aren't about sixty-two percent of the people that go there from the City of Bend?
Yep.
Do you guys remember?
Almost two-thirds.
Yeah, I know.
Well, and they, they pay more than fifty percent of the taxes. I haven't checked with Shane on that, but.
No, Shane, the.
It seems like it would make sense if that was an expense.
No, he comes, he, they allocate money.
Does contribute. I mean, we, we basically don't put any general fund into the Stabilization Center right now, so. And, you know, one other piece of information on that is that the Impacts Grant that, you know, kind of came through and made twenty-four seven operation possible in the current period, it was renewed by the state legislature and, and it indications are that, that, that we would be eligible to apply for that again. So there's.
You know, from, all I've been told, this has been a very successful operation.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, again.
If you are looking for some good employees, Mike, in case you want an extra job, truly.
I can be a client.
There's a bonus on the night shift, too.
Yes, if you work at the night shift, it's, it's been truly difficult to get, you know, staffing for it. And I know Holly is, they've had to think very cleverly, you know, with extra funding for different staff on the weekends and things, evenings.
And I think we can, we can show all these entities, these potential partner entities, some really compelling data that we're allevating some of the pressure on them, but going, getting from there to them writing a check is, is a, is a, is a large step.
Okay, we good to shift gears to solid waste? Okay, very good. And I'm glad we took the time to discuss Health Services, that, there were, at a lot of talking points, I still just summarized, great discussion. And thank you, Cheryl, for, for being available and Dan for your, your coordination there. Solid Waste, ten percent increase so far in, in tip fee revenue, that's really the, the biggest issue with, with revenue. Updates on other non-customery budget items this year, and I'm just, I'll keep this at a high level. One of the big ones, and the commissioners are aware of this, is the not fill, not landfill, the Cell Nine project that was budgeted for this year, it's postponed to next fiscal year. And the main reason is that upon, as they were designing the project, they discovered that the, during the completion of the geophysical investigation, the volume of excavation and the quantity of rock was significantly higher than originally anticipated. And yet, the engineer's estimate was that it could be up to about thirteen million dollars for, for the excavation. Now, the good news is that we generally have local contractors that will remove the rock for us and they then have the aggregate rights, the mineral rights for the removal of the rock and the production of aggregate for their use. And once, with those, with those rights, we often can then turn that deficit into a small revenue stream and that's gonna be the case. But at this point, just the big news for, for the Budget Committee is that that project is being moved from this fiscal year to next fiscal year with, with Cell Nine. Perimeter fencing project is also being, and also a big, big project that's, that's on the horizon likely for next year. Landfill siding, of course, that's a, a big topic for, for all of us. That project is underway, we have a consultant under contract and we will be meeting later this week with the consultant parametrics to really begin in earnest the landfill siding project. That'll be, that'll be a big one for the next couple of years ahead. There's also these new landfill methane emission rules, that could be a discussion in and of itself, so we won't really go there, but there's a lot of coordination with our solid waste department and Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, on what those rules mean for us and what it could mean for costs and expenses. So that's a bit of an unknown right now, but, but that's something our department's working through with them. The preview of significant budget items for this next year, Negus Transfer Station Project, we're soliciting for construction in June of twenty twenty-two with construction in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So that's, that's one coming up this next year. And then as I already mentioned, the Cell Nine Project. This is the second department that will have a new director, a permanent director, I should say. We have solid waste director interviews tomorrow. So we'll, we'll have a permanent director, our goal is by that point. So, any, any questions about solid waste?
Do you anticipate any increases in fees?
That's a good question. I, I don't know the answer to that. I haven't, I haven't heard Chad say anything about that at this point. I don't know if Greg or Dan or anybody's heard, but I haven't heard of any increases in fees at this point. Okay, I'll move on to Fair and Expo. Overall trending positive, a positive increase in the fund balance at the end of, at the end of the current fiscal year, but oh, big picture, not a lot of changes overall. The big, the big, the big one is an increase in fund balances can be expected due to the TRT transient room tax growth this next year. Budget preview, additional funds expected to be expended on capital, capital projects and large-scale repair replacements in fiscal year twenty twenty-three as construction costs may, we hope normalize there. RV Park operating, overall trending positive in revenue categories and expenses are under budget. Of course, one of the reasons there is, again, some staffing shortages there. And the RV Park Reserve is also increasing in fund balance due to the TRT growth. Not a lot else to report on with, with Fair and Expo.
Has any got given to expanding the size of the RV park?
I, I think that's, I think that's, with their, with their parks, with their facility master planning, I think they may, I think that, that's something they're discussing, either there or just south on the property that's being included in the city or other areas. But there is discussions of their master plan, including an expansion of the RV park. Any, any other questions? Hearing none. Road Department, just a couple of updates. The State Highway Fund Revenue is exceeding budgeted expectations through the first four months of the fiscal year and it's almost completely returned to the pre-COVID revenue projections. A significant portion of the CIP, the Capital Improvement Project expenditures, are related to the partnership projects with ODOT in both Tumalo and in Terabon. And that's, that's really it for Road Department. Not, it's, otherwise it's, it's stable and, and the funds are increasing, which is good news there. Hearing no comments or questions there. Shifting gears to the Community Development Department, the revenue, the, the revenue for the year-end projections have increased by about seven hundred thousand dollars primarily related to those fees that I was mentioning, calculated off of the building valuations as that, as that changed last, last spring. Expenditure year-end projections have reduced about two hundred and twenty, sixty-two thousand dollars, about a quarter of a million dollars are down related to cost savings from the vacant FTE that they continue to try to fill. Just big picture numbers on a calendar year comparison of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, single-family dwelling permits, site evaluations and land use applications are all trending between twenty-seven and thirty-five percent higher in twenty, in twenty twenty-one over twenty twenty. So significant increases. As we look at the fiscal year, just the first almost six months, single-family dwelling permits are up twenty percent over the first four months of last year, whereas site evaluations and land use applications are, are right in alignment with projections. So, single-family dwellings continue to, to really increase. And I think a good portion of those are gonna be in the cities of Lepine and the Sisters that are, are just, are booming, both of them are, as well as across the county. Community Development Department is the, the third department that has a new director. We conducted a, a big recruitment, great process, and internally, we promoted Peter Gatauski, our, our Planning Manager, to the new Community Development Director. Any questions, comments about community development? Okay, seeing none. Shifting gears to, to community justice, juvenile, anticipating minimally less than budgeted resources based on continued underutilization of the juvenile detention facility by other jurisdictions and decreased projections on investments. However, here's the theme again, significant personnel savings, about four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars anticipated due to a four point two percent vacancy rate. Otherwise, no significant changes.
With all these vacancies, have we seen measurable increases in overtime costs?
I would, good question. I don't, I, I don't have that in here, but I wouldn't be, I, I bet we do. I, I would expect that we would.
Maybe we're overstaffed?
Well, how, how much of this work is done by salaried positions versus hourly positions? I mean.
Well, there's.
Like, you go over to CDD, I'm, I'm thinking that a lot of those folks are salaried staff.
They're getting overtime.
Yeah, the question is if they're exempt or non-exempt from overtime. So the managers, supervisors, directors, they're gonna be exempt from overtime, whereas what you'll, you'll find with most, with assistant planners, all, everybody conducting building permits or building site plan reviews and, so a lot of those staff will, they're, they're, they're not exempt from overtime, so they will accrue overtime pay. Juvenile, they all will. Yeah.
Carceration, they're all subject to overtime.
Those are all exempt.
Yep.
So maybe we just have too many people.
Well.
Looking at the stats, we're getting by.
I think, I, I think there's a lot of stress on current staff, yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll shift gears to.
Let's have you go shadow some of those staff or.
No, I don't want to.
Adult, I'll, I'll just give, no significant differences in expenses or revenues overall, but the two key ones, anticipating significantly more resources, about three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars then budgeted. Fund three fifty-five is primarily state resource funded based on biennial allocations. And the key here is that they were not finalized until well after the FY twenty-two budgeting process was underway. Similar theme, significant personnel savings, four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars anticipated due to an eight percent vacancy rate in adult.
Adult PNP, is that what you were talking about, Nick?
Yes, yep. And community justice is, is the fourth and final department with a new director, huge recruitment, great process. D.V. Holcomb is, is our Director of Community Justice, effective December first. Any questions about community justice?
All of our departments were filled with our staff promotions, but you don't know about solid.
We don't know about solid.
Two, two of the four have been, community justice, community development, solid waste is tomorrow and then we'll conduct the, the public, the, the Health Services in the new year. So, so two, two, two so far, yes. Yeah, but they've all been full external recruitments and very competitive, just, just so you know, yeah. Okay, shifting gears to facilities and we'll have a more, we'll have a more robust discussion about facilities here soon. No big picture changes in expense or revenue assumptions. So really, the, the preview of the significant budget items for our next fiscal year are gonna be the courthouse expansion, big topic, public safety campus, the master plan update for the Sheriff's Office, as well as the adult parole and probation expansion, and then the third big topic, North County Campus. So those are gonna be some of the, some of the big, big projects on the horizon there. But overall, no significant changes there. But we'll talk more about facilities here in just a little bit. 911, they provided some updates, but really nothing significant. Additional unplanned revenue of just approximately seventy-five thousand dollars for, from OEM for telephone reimbursement and just a couple of other really minimal changes to the 911 budget, but nothing significant. For our District Attorney's Office, and we have our District Attorney in the, the back of the room, no significant budget adjustments, budget, budget changes from the budget. They anticipate adding one additional victim advocate in the next fiscal year, but the point I wanted, that, that they highlighted for, for us here is that there are three murder trials scheduled in FY twenty-two and they might have a couple more. And as I've learned from, from my, my points here, from, from our District Attorney, murder trials tend to get expensive with the cost of expert witnesses, late witnesses with travel and lodging for both. So there could be some significant expenses there. Beyond that, no other big updates from our District Attorney's Office. Do you have any questions there? Seeing none. Legal, they have a vacancy that they will not likely fill until mid twenty twenty-two and they'll contract, contract out work as necessary until that point, but that's a big loss. Amy, Amy Heverly did.
Went to Texas.
Yeah, it is, yeah, she's really a terrific member of our team and we certainly miss her. If no other questions about legal, I'll, I'll move into natural resources. Topic that's coming up for us are matching funds for a FEMA fuel reduction grant, just in terms of determining where the seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars for the matching grant will be. And that's a, that's gonna be a big grant with a lot of, a lot of good fuel reduction work. If I recall correctly, I don't have it in my notes here, but I believe that's all on the east side of Redmond, which is gonna be largely county-owned property. So, big project there. Clerk's Office, our county clerk's office, not much in the way of, of significant changes. They're trying, they're trending slightly behind the budgeted amount of two point five million for the clerk filing and recording fees, but, but nothing significant. Potential issue for, for fiscal year twenty-three, not a significant issue, but just requesting an additional administrative support technician, FTE for elections, just given that they haven't added staff for a long time. No significant issues with most of the other departments, significant changes from, from your adopted budget. So that includes Sheriff's Office, assessors, B OCC Administrative Services, HR, veterans, finance, justice court, information technology, so really nothing else to report in terms of significant changes. So with that, I'm happy to answer any, any questions or if you have any comments. Looks like we'll be able to conclude this agenda topic on time as well, or a bit ahead of schedule.
Oh, since John's here, I just wondered, I think Mary told me there was what, like eleven or twelve murder cases actually with Deschutes County and three of them are coming to trial? 11 or 12 murder cases actually with Deschutes County, and three of them are coming to trial this next year?
Yeah, we have three.
Excuse me, in this fiscal year that we're showing, before July 1.
And how many are like out there then, John?
Oh, I don't have those numbers ahead of me, but probably in the next fiscal year, we're looking at about five or six.
In addition to the three.
Right, right.
I know, I was thinking the number she told me was like 11 to 13.
Well, you figure some will settle, so to project which ones will go to trial, it's a bit of speculation, but that's what we're looking at.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks.
If there are no other questions about the department budget issues, then I'll turn it back to our Chair, Budget Committee.
Oh.
Otherwise, we're scheduled for a break at 2:00.
Yeah, do we want to take a break again, or do you want to?
Is there going to be a dedicated time somewhere along the way where we talk about this massive amount of vacancies?
We do have it with Human Resources that is scheduled for the impact of the labor shortage. Kathleen will join us, but she's only, we're only scheduled for about 10 minutes there. I don't know if we want to move that up and schedule a bit more time, or it's.
Or we could do something, you know, separate from this as well.
Mm-hmm.
Might be good to have her available, though.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to wait until.
Let's do it at that discussion.
Until she's here.
Yep.
All right, let's take a 10-minute break, then.
Great, thank you.
We are ahead of schedule by three minutes now.
Yeah, we're still ahead of schedule.
And as we come back, if I can just offer, in our previous agenda topic, I mentioned that we have four new department heads that you'll see coming up. But I should have also mentioned that we also have a new deputy county administrator, Whitney Hale. We made that decision in, just about two months ago, in early October. And then we backfilled Whitney's communications director position with a new public information officer, Morgan Emerson, and she started just a week ago today. So we now have the additional capacity in administration for all these projects that we're talking about now and going forward. So I just wanted to also make that announcement.
Nice. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna turn it over to Greg.
All right, thank you. So next up on the agenda is discussion about transient room tax. And in your packet was included a present, a full presentation of the transient room tax update. This is a conversation I had with the board a couple of weeks ago. And the intent of that conversation was to go back and start at ground zero and explain the history of TRT into Chutes County and arrive at where we're at today with some of the issues that we're talking about today. So it was really to build a complete understanding from soup to nuts. I'm not going to go through all of that today, even though it's included in the packet. No sense of going over it twice. I did send it to the budget committee ahead of time. But I do want to point out a couple of items in that presentation, just as a refresher. And again, this is to help set us up for the budget as we come up to the next year. And the reason why we're, the reason why I'm spotlighting this a little bit is because room tax has taken on a different perspective, I suppose, than it did maybe a couple of years ago. Under the, before COVID, our room tax unallocated amounts were relatively small in the scheme of things, and were growing just sort of normally and slow. And there wasn't a lot of attention paid to it. But that's all changed since COVID. So that's really the purpose of this whole item. So I'm gonna scroll forward to, and if there's anything the committee would like to hear about earlier, feel free to just jump out and we can talk about it. I think this is my first. Okay, so I'm looking at the slide post 2003 changes. And the reason why I want to show this is, just as a short refresher, there's two, there's more than two, but in terms of the split of how we're able to use the funding, there's really two pieces to look at. There's the first 7%, and then there's the next 1%. So the state law changed in 2003 and said, however you were allocating your room tax revenue before 2003, for any amount that you're collecting, is how you need to continue to, you need to follow that allocation rule moving forward. So our original 7% was split about 30%. We'll call it a third, just for simplicity. About a third was being used to fund tourism activity. And most of that was through the, through COVA, Central Oregon Visitor Association. And the other two thirds was divided up for general county operations. And the major component there was the sheriffs, was law enforcement. And then the 1%, which was enacted in 2014, again, this is afterwards, the rules were defined, any room tax collections after 2003 needed to be spent 70% to tourism and 30% for general count. So it flip flopped essentially between what we used to do before 2003 and collections that were begun after that point. So that just sets the stage for where we're at with room tax revenue. I'm gonna flip forward to a couple of, seen this one once already, but the budget. So spend a couple of minutes and talk about.
Greg, one question, sorry. So back to the post 2003 changes, 70% to Fair and Expo operations, 30% to F and E capital reserves. That's 30% to capital reserves is a policy choice, because that could be general fund or unallocated, correct?
That's right.
Was, do you think there's any expectation of the voters that that complete 1% was going to the fairgrounds? Or, you know, I'm just trying to backtrack, was our choice at this budget committee meeting just to allow that 30%, commit that 30% to the Fair and Expo? Or was there any expectation of that complete 1%?
Well, I actually don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that question. But I do know that the amount that goes to Fair and Expo, the capital reserve, could be allocated elsewhere. If the board and the budget committee decides.
Remember, I mean, because it was an effort by the industry, Sun River was supportive, the voters supported it. I'm just acknowledging that. 30% is still kind of a policy choice at this level.
Yeah. Yeah. So of the 1%, 70% of it goes to support the Fair and Expo Center in one form or another. And then the balance is simply going, the 30% is simply going to a reserve account for future capital.
Which we've done in the past out of general fund, you know, give some kind of a, an annual capital cushion that they could use for painting carpet or whatever. Now we've been able to take that out of the general fund and put it right with this one, too. Just a little bit of big picture thinking.
Okay, 21, 22 TRT budget. So just a couple of points that I want to bring up here. If you follow in the matrix on the left-hand side, you'll notice that the original budget, 21, 22, original budget for TRT collections was $11.6 million. At the time, projecting, and again, this was after a year of unexpected growth. We thought that COVID was going to have an adverse effect on our TRT revenue. And it turns out we were 180 degrees wrong on that. So the 11.6 million was a conservative, was as realistic of a projection, looking at 22 as possible, at 10% more than what we had received in fiscal '21. And it turns out that that, again, was nowhere near where we're actually ending up so far. Our current projection for TRT collections is $14.4 million. You'll note that that's a $2.8 million increase over already a banner year in revenue collections of 11.6, what we had projected. And two things that are important, one is if you slide over to the highlighted sections of that next graphic, you'll see really where the projected revenue in terms of what's remaining falls down to that unallocated piece. So what we've, after we take that $14 million, $14.4 million and pay out what we're obligated to pay out, there's a projection of $10.4 million in an unallocated balance, which is almost $2 million more than we'd budgeted. And then the piece that goes to Fair and Expo Capital Reserve is $1.3 million. That's one point. The other point I just want to let you know is, this can't go on forever. And in fact, we're looking at our preliminary November numbers for TRT. And I think they're going to come in, they're gonna come in down from compared to last year. So we'll have those numbers out at some point. But right now, they're looking like they're gonna be down.
Greg, with this 1.277 to the Fair Expo Reserve, what would bring their total in that reserve to, roughly?
Do you have that, my finance report?
Yeah.
I saw it earlier.
Oh, shit.
Is that the 10,000, 10 million that's highlighted?
No, that's the full.
I think you asked about the capital reserve, Fair and Expo.
Oh, the Fair.
Fair and Expo Capital Reserve.
So these numbers are at the same time as those numbers. But here's the projected capital reserve. Here's that piece that comes in in the Fair and Expo. So we're projecting between dollars and money.
And that's with this?
No, that is on a big.
So that'll be two and a half mil?
It'd be more, a little bit.
Is the board made, or the fair board, they had a policy discussion on that reserve? What is, is there a goal, we want to get 5 million or 3, or?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's kind of like the Health Benefit Trust, we're just, I have no problem with that. We're just building it up and building it up.
I think in this case, I mean, there's, my impression is that the Fair and Expo Center is of an age now where we need to do a lot of investments in upkeep in the near future to maintain it at the excellent level that it's at.
Because we got one heck of an investment there, and I agree, Phil.
Because, so these, I mean, you know, the, if there's, you know, if there's, after this year, two and a half million in there, I'm doubtful that that's enough. Well, you know, what the hell, trust fund. It's like, we got, we got, we got more than enough. But here, like, I doubt that this is enough to meet the needs.
There's out there of $50 million.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is minimal in the big picture still. It needs to be a magnitude bigger, probably. And remember, it was about $20 million bond originally, so 20 something years ago? So we're, but we're talking about, yeah, getting to 5, 10, and 15, and maybe 20, just for the capital investment in the near future there.
Well, I know.
But it's revenue generating.
They're putting together a long-term plan.
Yep.
Maybe there could be some dollar towards it, which would help us look at, yeah, we're headed in the right direction, or we gotta put more in, I don't know.
There was, there was work a couple of years ago on the strategic plan, the facility plan moving forward. And all that got put on hold during COVID, along with the fair and everything else. And I think Nick mentioned earlier in the department update that they're starting to relook at that again, and utilizing these funds to help the long-term capital investment in the fairgrounds.
There's a moment in time where that, the plat and the land, the title transfer for that extra 140 acres next to the fairgrounds is coming online, like around at the end of the year, which is now. I don't know that it's done yet. But I heard that it was basically just getting the surveyor and the plat finalized and the, you know, signatures done. But that's gonna be the point in time. When you talk to fair board members, they're like, when we have title to that, you know, so that's gonna be the restart of the excitement out there.
But honestly, so many of the buildings there need to be updated. But as a convention center, it's honestly, if you don't, if you're not right at your hotel and at the convention center, nobody's gonna go there for a convention, I don't believe. And that's, but I still see that we need to do some major upgrades, you know.
FMCA went there four times.
They did, huh?
And then Motor Coach Association.
Well, I mean, there's those kind of things that will go there. But I mean, it's.
He said no one's gonna go.
Well, I mean.
They brought their own rooms, right?
Okay, they brought their own. But I'm just saying that if, we spent millions of dollars on those buildings, I don't think, but they do need to be upgraded. They need to be refreshed. They're definitely dated, and they need some help.
And they're, my impression, just from the projects I've heard about recently, you know, like a little roof work here, you know, some lighting upgrades here, they're, they're just, they're not, they're not, they're not digging into the big projects on their list yet. And there is a list, so.
I still think you gotta get Warm Springs, put a casino in there. Then they would come.
Well, there's those 40 extra acres, 40 extra acres from the state now.
The tribes, and we're gonna count our chips.
Okay, I'm gonna roll a couple graphs forward to local tax rates. It's up on the screen up there. And just want to give you some context. This, the purpose of this was to say, you know, what's the, what's the county's rate, room tax rate compared to, say, other areas around the state, particularly those, I tried to look at those that were focused on tourism, with the exception of maybe a Multnomah County, but that's just a point of reference. But I wanted to give you a couple more numbers. So again, we're at 8% right now. Our, some comparables, in, on the west coast, anyway, Park City's at 13.7%. Lake Tahoe, 10%, Vail, 10.3%, Big Sky, 12%, and Sun Valley's at 9%. So we're definitely towards the bottom in terms of rates when either you're comparing within the state or outside the state.
What's the city of Redmond, same as Bend?
The city of Redmond is eight, I think the city of Redmond is at 8.99%. They're, or no, Sisters is 8.99. Redmond is 9%. Yeah.
But Greg, also, as we look at that, if we were to add a percent, we would know that 70, you know, it's a new tax, and 70% of that would immediately go to tourism promotion, which many could, many could argue, we don't need more, that much more of right now.
Yeah, and I would, and I would, just one, that's a good point, point of clarification here. It's tourism promotion or tourism facilities.
Right, right.
Yeah, so it's broader than just tourism promotion.
This chart you have, I'm confused a little, with the numbers. Here it shows Portland Metro has less than a million dollars. What's that mean?
That is the, that's their taxable, is that the lodging sales by region?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, so those are dollars, those are in thousands. So you need to put three zeros on the end.
So I gotta add some more zeros?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's 1 million times 1,000. So there, in other words, their scope compared, Portland Metro compared to everybody else is pretty significant, in terms of their sales. Yeah.
And that's, those numbers are from 18.
2018.
So they're old numbers.
And let's see here. So then, other uses of room tax, there's, here's just a list of, around the state, what different counties are using room tax money for, public roads and drainage, tourism education, tourism and promotion, law enforcement, Fair and Expo, campgrounds, general county services. So nothing, nothing that you wouldn't expect from what we've used funding for.
So one note on that bullet point campground, so that could be an opportunity, having some market rate campgrounds in the county somewhere, just helping with people that are coming and going, van life people, but also people that are, you know, dispersed camping in public lands. Just one of those notches of service that we could be adding.
You could use the campground money for this project that is under discussion for East.
Yeah, I just acknowledging that, that, yeah, maybe there's an investment there.
And we fall under tourism and not the more.
Or unallocated.
I think a good case could be made for, there's a, there's a subset of people that are just ready for that, you know. I'm not asking for anything special. Just give me a place. I've got a rig. I could pay rent or, you know, pay a nightly fee. You know, there's the 30-day limit on long-term camping on these facilities, which is, that'd be a state discussion. But even if that was in place, and all, all regulations are out there, it would be utilized, it would be, you know, an opportunity for some people.
But even just beyond the discussion of people who are looking for alternative kinds of housing opportunities, we haven't had a new campground built into Chutes County in 40 years. And you can, 40.
Forty.
Yeah, and you can imagine, you know.
We have an RV park out of the fairground.
Well, there you go. But yeah, private, private property, yeah.
In the, so, sorry, the CDD department did an analysis for us. Maybe that, maybe that's just done in the unincorporated area. But, I mean, you can imagine how much, how much demand, additional demand for a campground. So, I mean, you go out in the national forest on the edge of the city of Bend, and you look at, you know, all the $80,000 camper vans that are parked out and dispersed camping on the national forest. If we could, if we gave the, the Forest Service the opportunity to close down dispersed camping in the, in the real near and vicinity of town, because there was more sites where people could go, I think that'd be a win-win.
You'd see a lot of $80,000 motorhomes out of China.
You don't, you don't. But, but yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, we're talking about kind of, you guys are talking about a housing continuum. I'm talking about just tourism, recreation, you know, people. There is a demand for, for fee campgrounds that is being unmet, is not being met. Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, and then the last slide, and I won't go through the details, but the last one up there is public input. And this was just emails that we received, public interest we received on, on public's interest in use of TRT funds, so.
Greg, I was really confused on the slide before that one. I don't know if anybody else was. On this, this one here, yeah, that one. That one, that pie chart on the left is for the city.
Yeah, let me explain that. That's, it is a little confusing. The pie chart is, on the left, is the city's use of room tax, and it's their, I believe is their original adopted budget. The one on the right is our current estimate. So it's not really an apples-to-apples. What's important, and I think is useful, is just how the pie is divided. It's not necessarily the amount, but just how things are split up between the two. the two. That was the purpose of that graphic. And that's all I have, unless there's any further questions on TRT.
Getting back, I'm not picking on the city, but their general fund also includes, I think, you might know even already, I think Fire and Police. They collect it through the general fund, then it goes to Fire and Police, so that 7.6 million is Fire and Police, too, along with the 474,000.
Yeah, it could be any general fund operations, yeah.
Fire and Police is a very large portion of the city's general fund.
Right. Yeah, he's gonna put a little sun river.
All right. Thank you all. Lee Randall, Facilities Director, happy to be here today to talk about a mid-year update for our capital improvements. I have a few slides specific to the funds that we operate out of, and then we'll have time for discussion from there. Basically, I'll provide an overview of the funds, and then talk about a few specific So in broad terms, the General County Projects Fund 070 is funded by a portion of property tax. It's designated specifically for maintenance and repair projects greater than 5,000. And we'll dive into the uses of that fund here in just a minute. The Campus Improvements Fund 463 is funded by transfers from the General Capital Reserve Fund, and it's designated for remodel and new construction projects. And then finally, the General Capital Reserve Fund is used to accumulate county resources, and is used for investments related to the Board of County Commissioners' goals and objectives. And these resources come from the general fund in the form of a single annual transfer based on the decision that year of how to spend potential funds that are not allocated within the general fund. So we'll just talk briefly through each of those funds, and then I'll provide some other general updates as well. So the General Projects Fund 070, kind of the big picture is that we generally have a large roof replacement project, HVAC projects, remodel projects, sometimes the remodel projects within that fund are funded by a transfer from a specific department. In the case of roof replacements this year, our major project is this building, the Deschutes Services Building, and that project has, we've received bids on it, they were lower than what we had budgeted, and so we're intending to be able to fit in another smaller roof project in South County, in Le Pine, with some of those funds that, that we had appropriated for this year. So that's one of the good news of the last few months. We were able to find some savings and some design changes that won't affect the performance of the roof, and the cost came in lower than expected. The final contract amount will be in the neighborhood of 390, I'm sorry, around 300,000, and then the project as a total, when we look at our soft costs, we're budgeting 350,000.
Now, you gonna have pickleball courts up there?
Yes, and once we are able to install the elevator, once the elevator goes into the roof, then, then we'll follow with the pickleball courts, so.
Good answer.
Coming soon to a county administration building near you.
All right.
Pickleball courts.
Or you're just playing the game, and you can play with the rest of the three.
Yes, we're looking for it as a source of revenue.
When the ball goes off the roof.
Oh, wow, the ball concession.
That's the best part about these meetings, all the great ideas, that when we get these minds together. So HVAC projects are also something we try to address every year. We're currently completing a few digital controls upgrades, and we have another large project planned for the year. And basically, that relates to, as technology changes, controls and the, the equipment that they control becomes out of date. And so what we're replacing this year are controls from roughly 20 years ago. And then it's also related to, because it's internet-based controls, there are security concerns that we're able to address as we do these projects. And then, equipment replacements, a variety of those planned throughout the year. And then finally, remodel projects, we have some building security improvements at Health Services Courtney that just involves some, some improvements to various exit and egress paths. And that's being funded by a transfer from Health Services. And then for the Facilities Department, we're working on expanding some office space for our team to be able to operate more efficiently. So related to Fund 070, in the past, you're probably familiar, familiar with receiving this binder, which we'd used to assess our building conditions and plan for future work. The Budget Committee in the last few years had approved a project coordinator position, and we now have filled that person, that position, and that team member is up and running. And in the short term, we've worked to come up with a more robust facility condition assessment program. And so, the thin binder I showed before is now currently replaced with this draft version, and we will spare handing that out to all of you this coming spring. But that will be the data that helps inform the information that we bring to the Budget Committee and to the Board. And that shift really is from an approach where we would evaluate a building, much like an architect's final punch list walk. That was the old approach. What we've moved toward is a facility condition assessment that utilizes a couple of different national standards, a couple parts of the ASTM, and then a program that produces a facility condition index. And so, what we end up with is, we look at the total cost of existing repairs, and not all of these are urgent. It's, there's a scoring method within the standard where you determine the urgency of those. And then that's divided by the current replacement value, and that produces an index. And so you can see on the scale there, the index runs from excellent to poor, and it's really used to gain a broader, long-term vision of what our costs are to maintain or replace our facilities. And as you get to that poor side of the chart, that's where we're able to bring information related to the replacement of a, of a particular facility, when repair costs may exceed either the cost of replacement, or it just simply doesn't make sense to continue improving a facility that, that needs to be replaced. So the upside of this is it's, it's based on a national standard and accepted approach within the facility management community, and it helps us project those maintenance costs over time, and then, like I said, make that evaluation of repair versus replacement. And as I mentioned when I started, the idea is that this will kind of replace and take over, really expand the approach we've had till now, and help us do a better job of projecting costs over time, and to make sure that our maintenance spending is aligned. So the information that we hope to have by spring is to look at what we're currently spending, what it would take to, where we fall with variety buildings on this continuum, and then what it would take to get us into that good to very good condition, which is really where your long-term costs go down. So as we maintain buildings along the way, the, the kind of general approach is that those decisions help you lower your cost of operation over time. So I wanted to just highlight that here at the mid-year point for the committee. Any questions thus far, and then we'll move into some of the larger capital projects?
Just an observation, you know, total cost of maintenance and replacement is changing fast right now with inflation, but also just supply chain issues. So, yeah, and then that could be variable as it even happens. It's really interesting times.
Yeah. And having this additional in-house capacity for us who are the project coordinator, I think is gonna really help us drill down and get more data, and be able to apply that in a more efficient way, so.
Lee, I'm just wondering, what is our oldest building?
So, Reed School.
Well, I know that one, but, hides the rock building.
Check out the building, right?
So, so actually, Reed School and the Stone Building were built in the same era. I think Reed School, where the Deschutes County Historical Museum is, dates from 1914, I believe.
Yes.
And that's one of the buildings that we've done an assessment on, and we have some recommendations for some continued, you know, upgrades to that building. So I think that would be the oldest to, to answer your question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Do you have a new project manager position? Is that what it would be?
So, the, this particular position is a project coordinator, and their focus, when we created it, was on capital maintenance. And so to.
They're not gonna play a role in, like, the new courthouse expansion and?
Right. So we also have from a few years ago, a project manager position, and that, that position would have a role on larger capital, new construction and remodels. So for the courthouse expansion specifically, and, and we can delve into that when we get to the courthouse expansion, but the, I'll have an update on the status of that, and then I'll be able to kind of fill in the role that our staff would play in that project.
So the owner representative doesn't fill that role then?
Um, not specifically. And I can touch base on the, the reasoning and, and kind of what we brought to the, to the Board, and, and how we approach that. But, yep, I'm, I'm happy to touch base on that. So Campus Improvements Fund 463. So as I mentioned, within this fund, we have multiple projects. So with the Munis software system, we're able to track specific projects within a fund, and then be able to treat them on their own for budgeting purposes and costs. And so, within this fund, we have some planning funds, we, the juvenile detention and minor remodel there is also being funded through this Fund 463. But to highlight a few of the larger ones, the adult parole and probation expansion, the construction manager general contractor is currently evaluating some subcontractor bids, and those bids were due a few weeks ago, and we had to work on a few of them with a little, took a little more work to finalize. And then we'll be back to the Board, we think, in early January with a contract amendment, so that project can go forward. So we're targeting, it's currently in review with the city of Bend for permits, and we're targeting construction in April at this point. The North County Campus Project, so just a bit of an overview, there are two buildings that share a parking lot. 236 Kingwood is the smaller of the two buildings. A portion of it is occupied currently with a tenant for about another year or so, and that has a portion that we can have access to sooner, and so we're finalizing the programming for that project. Our goal is to really design the entire project upfront, so we go to plan review for one permit, and we'll be moving forward with selecting an architect here in the next few weeks to a month, and then move forward with the design on that project. We expect it's gonna be a fairly minor remodel, a port, about 1,800 square feet. One suite is intended for use by multiple, by multiple county departments, and then the larger portion would be for public health, and then we have some other functions in another area of the building. And then 244 Kingwood is the larger of the two buildings, it's the former Bend, or former Redmond Surgery Center, and that area is currently vacant. We have an architectural team under contract. We're very close to finalizing that contract, but we're beginning work on design for, specifically for behavioral health. And then there is a remaining suite within that building of about 26 to 2,700 square feet that's currently occupied, and will be occupied for the foreseeable future by St. Charles. Any questions so far on either adult parole and probation or North County Campus projects? So we'll, yeah.
I'll just let you know, the Kingwood properties, I was able to talk to some of the ownership at the New House Manufacturing. So there are neighbors over there, so.
Yes.
It was just, you know, we walked out the back door of their building, and it's right there, the corner of that surgery center. So just, you know, if there's ever, anything comes up for the, just the neighbor situation there.
Okay.
I'll be able to make a connection.
Great, appreciate that. And so the courthouse expansion, just to provide a general update, and to Mike's question, the Board had approved the use of an owner's representative for that project. And I'll just give some, a little bit of background rationale for that, but one of the challenges on a project of that size is the complexity, the number of partners that are involved. And so, from the Facilities Department perspective, our thoughts were kind of along these lines. One, we do have a, a number of other projects that are underway that our project managers focused on. Courthouse is a highly specialized construction, a lot of moving parts, and so that's why we went to the Board with a request to utilize an owner's rep for that project. We'll also, what it will also allow is, it helps the Facilities Department and our project manager to be one of the people at the table, rather than the person kind of running the show. So in my mind, they can help kind of see the things where an owner's rep who's focused on running the project, getting us to the end goal, may not be as focused on the big picture and how the facility relates to the rest of the downtown campus, to our long-term maintenance needs and requirements as a department. So that was some of the reasoning that we brought to the Board for the decision to use the owner's rep. That, we're very close to finalizing a contract with a firm to provide those services, and they are ready to move quickly as soon as we're finalized. And so we expect that in January will be, we will have a public RFP on the streets for a design team, and then shortly thereafter, we'll be working toward establishing the CMGC process for that project as well. That's generally the, the update on those major projects that, that are coming. And, make sure I've.
Lee, what's the general cost for a construction manager or an owner's rep? Is that a percentage of the contract, or a fixed fee, or six figures, or?
Yep, it's above six figures, or into six figures. So, and the, so when we budget for it, we generally look at a percentage basis. I think some of the percentages we generally look at would be around, I may be here, but 1 to 3% is kind of a, a general rule, and we just use that for budgeting. When we get into the actual negotiations, what we're looking from the firm, for, from the firm is specific scope of their services, how that relates to the project, how it will bring value to the county in executing that project. And then, the contract, as we draw it up, is a not-to-exceed contract based on actual hours. And so, going into it, we, we get an estimate of, we kind of go back and forth, what they think it will take, what we think our needs are. In this particular case, we had a couple members from the Facilities Project Review Committee as part of the selection process, and they also helped provide some input on pricing and scope of services that, in their experience, would be required for a project of that size. So that's how we got to the cost, and the, as it currently stands, we are around 400,000 for that on a project where we're estimating will be beyond in the 27 to 28 million dollar range. And so in terms of a percentage, that's kind of where we've ended up. And we'll be finalizing that contract hopefully this week.
Thank you.
Yep. I just, in terms of a few closing remarks, a few other items within Fund 463 are space planning. We have the Public Safety Campus Master Plan update that's coming, and Sheriff's Office projects. The Sheriff's Office has budgeted separately for the design and planning of projects related to the Sheriff's Office. And within Fund 463, we've budgeted for updating the Public Safety Campus Master Plan. And then, as we go forward, you know, all of these projects directly relate to our operations and maintenance as a depart- and maintenance as a department. And the addition of these spaces is spurring us to look at our operations, what our staffing needs are going forward, to make sure that we're able to address the additional space, the needs of the tenants that'll be in the space and make sure we continue to deliver that value from our department standpoint. So that's something we're looking at currently. It takes extra staff to plan the projects and to execute them even from our maintenance staff standpoint when it comes to looking at current conditions in the building. There's just always some extra tasks that are involved and then leading up to the project itself. And then once we're in a maintenance and operations mode. So that's something that we're looking at and evaluating to bring to the committee in the spring. So that closes, I believe, unless, yes, I am at the last slide. So that kind of closes what I had prepared and I'm happy to have any follow-up questions.
Maybe more financial questions, but when we, when we looked at our list of capital projects that we want to complete in the next couple of years back during the budget hearings, Greg prepared for us, you know, some, some high-level financial information to help us think about, you know, how we were going to cover these costs. And, you know, my, my recollection is that there was, you know, we have a substantial amount in capital, you know, capital construction reserves. We have property tax collections above requirements. And then, you know, there's the remaining, remaining piece. And one of the things that we needed to think about was, you know, what kind of appetite do we have? How comfortable are we taking on debt to cover some of the remaining costs? And I was hoping you could kind of lay out for us a little bit of perspective on that, Greg? Yeah, first off, like how much debt are we carrying as a county, you know, relative to, you know, to a comparable-sized local government entities? What kind of financing is available right now and what kind of interest rates? And my impression is that this is a, if you want to borrow money for a large capital project, this is actually a very good time. And so could you lay out what that kind of scenario opportunity looks like for us right now?
Sure. And you're right. So last year, we had a brief spreadsheet, I happen to be looking at it right on my screen right now, that, that from a high level was intended to, to help us as we move forward with some of these decisions, what kind of financing options we had and what would be the implications of those decisions moving forward. So to answer one of your questions, we have very low debt. I think that's, that's one of the reasons why we have the credit rating that we do. And as you know, we've just paid off, just this last year, we paid off one of our outstanding debt series. And we just refunded another one just December 1st. And we're looking at doing the same on our Series 2013 bonds as well. So we're being real proactive about managing that debt moving forward. Overall, it's very low. The scope of a courthouse order of magnitude, funding for that would not change that markedly. So I think we're okay there. In terms of rates, the rates or lows are ever going to be. I don't know how long that's going to last. There's obviously talking about the Fed cooling off the growth in the economy, which is going to have an upward pressure on our rates, borrowing rates. But we do have, we, the intention would be, when we come back in the May or June timeframe for Budget Week, is to refresh all of those options and present some what-if analysis to say, you know, what if we did this? Or here are some of the options. What if we did that? What's the long-term implications of taking on all debt versus taking on only a portion of it in debt? And some of those options, including, you know, the impact of, I think one good gauge is for each cent of property tax, it's probably worth about $250,000, maybe a little bit more in debt service. So roughly speaking, a six-cent property tax, if we were to go to the full amount, would cover about $30 million in debt. So that's a real big picture.
For how long? 20, 30 years?
The bottom line is, there's, there's probably not a better time to borrow, but that window is starting to close. And, you know, honestly, even if rates went up a little bit, that still wouldn't be horrible. It's been, if you look back 30 years or 40 years, we're, nobody in those days would ever complain about the rates that we're even looking at getting.
Think about my, my parents, what my parents paid on their mortgage, like 14% or 15%. Is there, do we have other reserves? I mean, we're, you know, I think Mike was asking about the Health Trust Fund this morning. Do we have other reserves of funds in the county that, you know, given, given how low the yields are on investments right now, that it would make sense to, you know, borrow from ourselves instead of, you know, going out and doing, doing bonding and things like that?
Yeah, sure. So, so we, we would definitely, if everything stayed the same, our cost of borrowing would, our investment returns compared to cost of borrowing, there is a margin there. So, you know, if we're making 60 basis points on our investments right now versus, say, a 3% on a bond, if we were to invest those funds, if we were to borrow from ourselves, we would certainly be doing, we could certainly do as well or better than maybe the 60 basis points. But over the course of 30 years, there's some interest rate risk there that says, you know, we could lock in a low borrowing and then assume that interest rates would grow. We'd have some more opportunity in terms of the investment side to make up the difference. So there's a lot of, there's some, there's some gives and takes, right? And a lot of it has to do with the longevity of a decision like that. Those, those lines could cross in a hurry. Or it's just based on your assumptions.
When do we, when do we need to make these decisions?
So Lee, are we, when are you thinking? Do you have a ballpark idea of groundbreaking? Right. So currently, we're funded for the design and development portion of it. And that's been appropriated within 463. We're targeting about, and these are very rough timelines, given that we're just starting to get a designer on, on board. But construction could be as early as spring of 2023. So about a year from this coming spring to start construction. And so if we are able to get a design firm on board by March, work through that design, I think a year's worth of design is realistic and permitting. That could push till June. Those, these are very kind of broad timeframes. But realistically, we would need to have those decisions made for that spring of 2023 timeframe target.
So completion in '24 or something?
And then completion a year to a year and a half after the start of design. So kind of the, the general thumbnail sketch we've been using is three years from the time we have an architectural team on board. And so winter of, really January of '25 is kind of a realistic target.
So when they appoint two new circuit judges, where are we going to partner?
So we've been working real closely with the State Court Trial Administrator and we think we have a pretty robust plan. And they've been very flexible. And so there's, there's several different components that we've been able to bring into play. But at this point, I think they're comfortable that they have a plan to be able to have them hit the ground running and be fully operational. That doesn't mean in terms of that we'll have two full additional courtrooms, but that they'll have the space and technology, et cetera, that they need to do their work.
Maybe we don't have to build this.
Well, there's, I could go into detail in some of the arrangements, but they're, they're certainly not ideal for the long term, so.
Are we still going to be using the fairgrounds?
They're just so happy to be getting the help. They're going to make it work.
Our goal for the foreseeable future is to use the fairgrounds, especially as the, the need for distancing continues. That's been a huge and significant help from a facility standpoint and from what I hear from the state courts as well.
Would they pay us for that?
No, we, we, the court, the fair makes revenue on it.
Oh, good. So if we don't build this, we can continue to make more money.
Well, it's gonna take a couple of years, Mike.
The county pays, the county pays Fair and Expo for that, use of that space because of the state law requirement that the county provides the space for the courthouse.
So I may have missed the answer, but so if we're, if we're looking at a 2023 groundbreaking, when do we need to make the financial decisions?
It would be, and I didn't mean to pin Lee down because I know these things are fluid and it makes him a little nervous. But, so if we're looking at sometime in the spring of '23, we will need to start working on our financing next fiscal year.
By then, the whole interest rate thing-
Beginning of next fiscal year or?
Yeah, beginning.
Probably the sooner the better, wouldn't you think? I mean, no one's expecting rates to go down.
No, and, and this is potentially a big issue. So we're going to want to get, stay ahead of it and have the conversations publicly so everybody knows what's going on and, and approach it that way, so.
Okay, Lee, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Nice job, Lee. One minute to spare.
Eric will turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you for having me. The next topic for discussion is financial impacts of recent litigation. And this refers to a jury award out of the Eugene Federal Court against the county for a lawsuit from Eric Kowzowski, who ran for sheriff. And then the second piece is a settlement with a sheriff's deputy in the amount of In explaining this item, I'm really going to break it down into three parts. The first is, is the financial impact. The second is the impact on the risk fund. And then the third piece is a discussion about how the risk management fund, what revenue comes into it or how, how that fund receives revenue. In terms of financial impact, the county is self-insured for general liability up to $1 million. And then we purchased an excess general liability policy for any claim over $1 million and up to $10 million. So any, any claim and any large claim will eventually impact our cost to purchase that excess general liability insurance. That has not occurred yet because the Kowzowski jury award was, was this summer in August. And then the settlement, the, the second item, the settlement, just recently occurred. But in terms of general liability insurance, in the current fiscal year, we, we purchased it for $122,000. And then I looked back the last two fiscal years. And in fiscal year 2021, it was $115,000. And then in '19 and '20, it was $111. So if you look at that, the last couple of years, our general liability insurance costs have increased on average of 5%. So what we would expect to see is, is the next time we purchase that, that will go up. We don't know how much it'll go up, but it will go up as, as will be the case, anytime we have a large claim, we will pay more for, for excess general liability. In terms of what that is based on, it's based on, they look at population of the county, FTEs, the budget of the county, and any paid claims. So all of those factor into how much the insurance company charges us for excess general liability. So next time we get a bill, it'll be higher. I don't know how much higher. We could take a look at that. And we won't be able to attribute it all to these two claims because really all of those pieces go into how much an insurance company charges us for excess general liability. In terms of the impact on the risk fund, there's not a huge impact on the risk fund for a variety of reasons. The first is, we only have one risk fund. So we pool together our counties, county departments into one risk fund. And we also pool together our insurance programs. So the risk fund covers general liability, workers' comp, property, vehicle insurance, and unemployment. And like any other, I mean, the concept of, of insurance is the more, more you pool things together, the more stability the fund has. The other piece of it is with the risk fund is, is anytime we have an open claim, we go through and assess how much that claim may cost us over the life of that claim. And we plan for and budget for it. So, so anytime there's an open claim, we have an estimate and, and sometimes our, yes, Mike?
We're looking for some-
Okay.
It's blue.
Sorry, Eric.
Oh, no problem.
I can't even read the agenda. I ain't going to go down there.
All on your clothes?
Well, I've already stood up.
What's that, on your lapel?
Where?
Right, on your lapel.
Oh, thank God.
Good job.
I'm going to go fail.
Okay, sorry. I found it in the barnyard once. I was like, I, I don't like to lose these things. And I just ordered brand-new ones, right? And of course, it just arrived today. And I thought, oh, there it goes. I just lose one and get a new one. Sorry, Eric.
Oh, no problem.
Wear soft contacts for exercise.
I have some contacts in Vegas.
So part, so part of managing a self-insured plan is, as claims come in, you estimate the potential cost and then you, you budget accordingly. And any claim that lasts for a couple of years has really been planned for, for a number of years. And then the last piece is how the fund, how risk management is funded. And as you know, we charge departments for the insurance coverage. And we have a cost allocation plan done each year by an actuarial firm. And what they do is they look at the past four years of paid claims, the number of FTEs, the budget of the department, and the relative risk of the activities that they perform. And those go into, to the cost allocation plan. So a department that has a large claim, either on the workers' comp side or general liability, they'll be paying for that for about four years in, in higher rates and then it falls So that's a little bit about the financial impact to the risk fund of, of the lawsuit or the jury award and also the, the recent settlement. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So the, the impact in terms of the cost to the department is almost like a budget issue for them, right? They have to accommodate that when they consider the cost of their program, of their department?
Yeah, the, the risk fund is an internal service charge. And so right around this time of year, we, we build out the, the costs that's programmed into their, into their budget.
So somebody like the sheriff who gets a couple of different contributions from the public, it, it does impact them, doesn't it? The public?
The way it impacts, the sheriff's office pays the risk fund and those funds come from the sheriff's budget. And there's, as you know, there's, there's two law enforcement districts plus general fund transfers and TRT. And so that's ultimately what pays for the, the costs to provide insurance for the sheriff's office.
Right.
Yes?
What, what do we anticipate sheriff's office contributions to the risk fund doing in the next couple of years? I mean, will this, will these, you know, these, you know, one-time, one-time items that, that hit the risk fund, will those mean that there's like a significant jump in sheriff's office contributions or do they kind of smooth it out over?
We smooth it out. There won't be a spike. And we did that for all of, all claims, including workers' comp. I mean, we have some departments that have, you know, high workers. We had one department that had a couple of significant workers' comp claims. And, and because of, of how we budget the risk fund in terms of pooling together departments and the insurance programs, they saw an increase, but not a huge spike. And really, if, when I look back at, you know, the, the biggest cost to the, the risk fund is, is general, general liability claims and workers' comp claims. And I've gone back and looked over, you know, a 10-year period and they kind of flip-flop where one year, you know, we might be relatively low on the workers' comp claims at about $500,000 to $600,000. And then the general liability may be higher. And there's other years where workers' comp claims might have been up in the $1 million, years where workers' comp claims might have been up in the million, 1.2 million dollar range, and general, general liability happened to be, be lower. But because we pooled together all five insurance programs, it provides stability for the fund, and then as a result, our charges to departments based on large claims go up but not spikes. Part of the smoothing process.
We were really lucky we didn't have a big workers' comp thing this year, too.
Yeah, yeah, and, and part of the goal of the fund is that if there's a, when there's a payout, there's sufficient funds there, and that we're not resulting in, you know, reducing services to the county or huge increases to departments. In fact, if you look at the risk management fund, over the last couple of years, it was a little bit high because of planning for, for, for some claims, should they occur.
Eric, what's the cash balance in all those funds?
The risk fund, the ending fund balance was 9.5 million, and then the projected ending fund balance for the end of this fiscal year is about 7.8 million.
Because of the payouts?
Yes.
Have you done any analysis, and I think I asked you this last year, are we still better off self-funded on these, or would, or do you normally go out and double-check, let's say, SAFE or Liberty or something? What would you charge for workers' comp, or go to Zurich or somebody, so what do you charge for life?
Yeah, you did ask that, we looked into it, we, we actually can't get quotes unless you're actually really putting things out to, to bid. But in talking to, to both the people we work with, that the Oregon Public Entity Excess Policy, they believe that we're still, it's still better to, to self-insure both general liability and workers' comp, and also talking to others that we work with. On the workers' comp end, we're self-insured but purchase an excess policy for high-dollar claims as well.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, Phil, Commissioner Chang.
One other, one other cost to think about associated with these, these particular litigation items is the, the funds that were expended for legal, legal counsel for, for our side, you know, for the sheriff's office or, or for the county side, and I, I know we, we had to retain outside legal counsel for Kozowski. So that doesn't get, that doesn't get paid out of the risk fund?
Yes, it does.
Oh, it does, okay.
Yep. All, all litigation costs, including the cost of trial, are paid for by the risk fund.
So Kozowski had the million-dollar penalty, and then some hundreds of thousands of dollars of external legal counsel fee?
Yeah, the breakdown, I brought it with me, is the total is about 2.3 million. The cost for outside legal counsel, this was both to represent the sheriff and the county, the cost for outside legal service was $653,000. The trial costs were about, we're still getting some costs in in terms of the cost of the trial for, for travel, but the trial costs are coming in about $15,000, $20,000. And then the judgment, it was just slightly over a million dollars in economic damages, and then the lawyer fees to pay for his attorney, the plaintiff's attorney, was $525,000. So the total, total cost is about 2.3 million. We have the insurance policy that covers anything over a million, so when all is said and done, we will have paid out 2.1, or 2.3 million, and then we will receive a million dollars back from the excess policy because that also covers our lawyer costs in terms of the, the million-dollar self-insured retention, those fees go to that.
Thank you, Eric, that was a great job on that.
You're welcome.
We're ready for the next.
Nahad here?
Yeah, he's, he's been in the hall, he's.
Hi, everyone.
Nahad, here's a spot up on the dais, it's kind of a good spot for presenters.
Oh, yeah, perfect. Lou. Oh, thank you. Do we have enough chairs?
Uh, not up here.
You want to grab one?
There are four of us.
Oh, hey, Greg, how are you?
Uh, yes. Get some more chairs. You guys sitting here? You have four total?
We have plenty of chairs, if you want to sit. What's this?
My water.
I love it.
Hi, thank you.
Well, we're ready whenever you are.
Thanks for joining us, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Jessica, I'm gonna get started, is that okay? Is there a microphone?
There it is.
Okay. Good afternoon, colleagues. Hope you're doing well? Okay, so Jessica has permitted me one minute to give an opening, so I won't take too much of your.
One minute.
One minute, right.
Right, right, right.
See, you're already distracting me with, so for the record, my name is Nahad Sadrasudi, I'm the Director of Public Health for Deshute County Health Services. Thank you for inviting us to this mid-year budget review, really appreciate it. So there are two reasons I'm excited to be here today. The first reason is that, is my perhaps inherent affinity for budget process. Yes, I said it, for budget process. And the reason for that, I'm probably influenced by my mentor from a couple of decades ago, and the reason for that is that budget planning and submission and discussion is really one tool that we have to demonstrate alignment between our values and our resource allocation. So six months ago, when this group voted for us to roll out Healthy Schools, at that point, we were calling it Youth Success Program, but it has already evolved into Healthy Schools, you demonstrated that our youth matter, that we must invest in them, not only because it's the right thing to do, but because the return on that investment is going to be huge. Also, it was an acknowledgement that we were reaching our youth when it was too late, before harmful behaviors were reaching them, vaping, unwanted pregnancies, and so on and so forth. So that's one reason I'm excited to be here today. The other reason is to see Mike. The other reason, of course, no. The other reason, I saw your eyes rolling that way, so I thought I'd bring you back in, Mike. The other reason I'm excited to be here is because we actually have a great product to present on, right? I was thinking of, a few years ago, when I was invited to my high school reunion, it was my 10, 10-year reunion, right? No, I'm joking, but I, I don't know how it is in the Northwest, in, in the Midwest where I grew up, usually those who are doing quite well in life, right? Those who got, who married their, I don't know, high school sweethearts, they got 2.2 kids, they're making six figures, they got a dog, they got an SUV, they live in this, right? They're the ones excited to go to a high school reunion. They have something to show off, right? So today, we're excited to be here because we have something to show off. We have a great product with great progress since six months ago, when you all approved Healthy Schools, or back then it was called Youth Success Program. And I think you'll be pleased to hear the presentation, especially revolving around the action plan, which you were requesting, and the accountability or evaluation framework. Now, what I hope doesn't happen is, in this eight to 10 minutes, that we don't communicate. What I hope does not happen is that we don't, I realize that's double negative, and I got an English teacher here, so what I hope doesn't happen is that we don't communicate properly and adequately the complexity of this initiative. We're talking about two big institutions with different processes and people and cultures coming together with a common goal. So I hope we don't downplay the complexity, and I hope I also don't downplay, or we don't downplay, the resourcefulness of our staff from both institutions in addressing some of the challenges along the way. Okay? So with that, if you allow us, we're going to proceed with the presentation. I'm going to introduce Amy to my left, she is our Health Services Supervisor, who we are really fortunate to have as part of our public health family to lead this initiative from the Health Services side. So with that, I'll.
Thank you very much, and just a little bit more information with me, I am a doctor of public health, and I am coming to you with two years of experience working at another local health department in Oregon, five years of experience as a public school corps teacher, and about 10 years of experience working in school-based health interventions. So I'm hoping you're feeling confident in my level of expertise as I bring a lot of experience into this work. If you don't mind going to the next slide. This is a presentation that's a follow-up to our October 6th presentation to the Board of County Commissioners, in which we provided a three-month progress report about our program planning process and our approach. This is the same slide from that presentation with three additional achievements in bold that have been added since then. We have finalized our Healthy Schools program and evaluation plan, we've launched Healthy Schools with placement of our public health specialists in Ben Senior High and Lapine High, and we have been busy integrating our work across multiple organizations for a truly integrative and comprehensive approach to improving school health. The rest of this presentation provides more details about our achievements, our evaluation plan, and a description of the factors affecting our implementation to this point. For the next slide, thank you. A major achievement of our work to date is finalizing our 34-page program and evaluation plan. This plan is a product of five months of partner engagements, collaborative planning processes, and data and literature reviews. A copy of this plan is in your packet, and you can see what it looks like on the slide, it has the green color on the front of it. The bullet point on this slide provides a list of what is included in that plan, a rationale for the program in Deschutes County, a description of our CDC-recommended approach, our Healthy Schools mission, goals, and strategies, an implementation plan and timeline outlining our major activities, and our evaluation plan, including a thorough list of targeted metrics in the appendix. Our Healthy Schools Steering Committee, which includes executive and program-level leaders from the school district, the High Desert Education Service District, and public health reviewed and approved the program plan in November. Because quality improvement and response to local needs is our priority, we will continue to gather feedback about our approach and revise our plan to meet the needs of students. We will report any major changes to our plan in our annual reports, which I'll describe in a little bit more detail shortly. Our goals for Healthy Schools include, one, increasing health, social, and emotional supports in schools; two, increasing students reaching the positive youth development benchmark; three, reducing unmet physical and mental and emotional health needs amongst students; four, reducing disparities in our focus areas by groups of students; and five, increasing on-time graduation rates. Before summarizing our evaluation plan, it's important to describe our program focus. Our focus is quality implementation of school health practices that have strong evidence of being effective at improving student health and academic outcomes. We do not aim to design and test new programs. Healthy Schools is a CDC-recommended process for change. We aim to assure quality implementation of evidence-based practices, assure fidelity with research-tested programs, and assure that we are adhering to state and district laws and policies. We aim to expand the reach of these effective practices to assure all students and families can benefit from them. Therefore, our evaluation plan is primarily an implementation or process evaluation and a quality improvement process. We are consulting with Oregon Health and Sciences University's Evaluation Corps to have an external review of our program plan, in summary, or of our evaluation plan. In summary, we plan to produce annual reports about how well we are implementing our program to plan, monitoring our targeted metrics and indicators of outcome changes, and revising our plan for quality improvements. This table that you see on the slides is from our program and evaluation plan. We'll see, you'll see on the left-hand column the sources of data that we have access to, and in the middle column, the type of measures we will be using from those sources. All data will be available annually with the exception of Oregon Student Health Data, which is a state survey administer every even year. The column on the right is when we plan to report on those measures. One success I wanted to highlight is our program launch in the high schools. Healthy Schools launched at Ben Senior High and Lapine High in mid-November. Once we had successfully recruited and oriented our two public health specialists, both public health specialists are located in their schools' counseling centers. Their first month at the schools has been focused on meeting and building relationships with school staff and gaining access to student and parent groups, all in an effort to work towards facilitating the collaborative school health assessment, prioritization, and improvement planning. That's the foundation of our evidence-based approach, the CDC's recommended approach. But in just the first couple of weeks, our public health specialists are already filling critical gaps in our priority areas. Two examples include, one, providing timely substance use screenings for students who have violated the school's policy as part of their upshift program, an evidence-based alternatives to suspension and early intervention program; and two, providing high-quality suicide prevention education required by the district's suicide prevention plan under Oregon's Ati's Act. To narrow into the suicide prevention education, this public health specialist relieved the school counselor and health teachers of more than 11 hours of instructional time and an unknown amount of prep time to allow them to focus on other priorities that only they can do. Our public health specialist reached more than 100, mostly ninth-grade students who are in a critical transition period between the changing stressors of middle and high school. These 100-plus students now have another trusted adult at their school they can talk to about mental health, in addition to their health teacher and their counselor. The public health specialist worked closely with the counselor, the health teachers, and our Deschutes County suicide prevention subject matter experts to assure that the curriculum was delivered with high fidelity to the research-tested program and best practices in suicide prevention education, while also being delivered with high levels of student engagement. This level of collaboration means that this curriculum was taught in a way that is assured to prevent suicide. The public health specialist made this happen. In October, at our presentation that we had to the Board of County Commissioners, we highlighted some factors that may affect our ability to fully implement our program. And we'd like to provide an update on whether or how these factors have affected our program implementation to date. We have been able to continue in-person schooling, we have had a welcoming reception at the schools, and high levels of staff engagement at the schools and the district office, and we have been able to identify reliable and timely data for evaluation purposes. One of the greatest assets to date is our local funding provided by Deschutes County and Ben-Lapine Schools. This local investment has allowed us to develop a plan that addresses our local needs and priorities. In our October presentation, we highlighted that other districts in Oregon are using the same approach for their Healthy Schools programs, but their program focus is defined by the national funder. One of the greatest challenges as a program planner is finding funding opportunities that meet our local priorities. With our local funding, we did not have to compromise any of our priorities for funding. With our local funding, we did not have to compromise any of our priorities for funding purposes. Thank you for this. There are two factors that have affected our implementation to date that we are working on improving. Both are related to integrating our Public Health Specialists into the school settings. First, related to the second-to-last bullet on this slide, our original plan was to have our Public Health Specialists work on a teacher's schedule, which is 40 hours a week during the school year and a break in the summer. However, our county policies and practices need to adjust to make this happen. HR is working with us to resolve this. In the meantime, our Public Health Specialists are working 32 hours a week year-round, which is not ideal for full integration into the school setting. Second, related to the last bullet on the list, it took longer than expected to recruit and hire our staff. This delayed getting our staff into the school sites, which resulted in them missing the first, the beginning of the school year, which is a critical time for launching our work. And last, there are many collaborators that have been in this journey with us, and they are acknowledged on this slide with their logos present. Thank you for your investment and support in Healthy Schools to this point. Nahad, Laura, Jessica, and I are available for questions.
Who's in charge of the thousand-piece puzzle?
Of the what?
Puzzle. Put the puzzle on the table at the high school.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I think it's in the counseling center, so whenever students come in, they can work on the puzzle while they're waiting for a counselor. Yeah.
That's a great eye.
I have a quick question. So looking through the program plan, it's lots of great information there. Just occurred to me, you have some key performance metrics, right? And you refer to them as short-term, intermediate-term, and long-term. What are those terms? What do those mean?
In general, we've listed them as short-term if they are to be completed in a year, so the first year of implementation. Intermediate-term is the space between the first year and the third year, and then the longer term would be three years plus. If you go to the appendix, there's a very detailed list of measures and then specific dates on each of those measures. I just put a short, condensed version in the middle of the document, just not to take up five or six pages right there in the middle.
Okay, great. Yeah, there's a lot of information. You still had my attention on page 10 in the middle.
Awesome, thank you.
Commissioner, I'd like to ask Laura what the, what the school board has to say in terms of input or evaluation of the program, you know, tracking up to now.
Well, Phil, that's a great question. Actually, we're presenting tomorrow night to our Board of Directors. We've been talking informally in our Board Leadership Meetings, but our first public presentation to our Board will be tomorrow night, so more to follow. I am confident, they have been 100% behind this from the very start. I'm confident they'll be impressed with the work that Amy and her team have led.
Can you introduce yourself, too?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm Laura Nordquist. I'm the Deputy Superintendent of Ben-Lapine Schools and a member of the Steering Committee from the school district side for the Healthy Schools Initiative.
We have also Jessica Jacks here. Go ahead.
Hi, Jessica Jacks. Supervisor of Prevention and Health Promotion with Deschutes County Health Services in Public And I rock, paper, scissored and lost to Amy, so I had no slides to speak to, but happy to answer questions.
I also wanted to ask about the hiring delay for the two Public Health Specialists. Was that the same kind of hiring challenges we're hearing for every other county position, or were there unique challenges associated with the hiring these two positions?
I think, were you gonna... I think they, I actually don't know all of the other challenges that, I know there are challenges, but I don't know the extent of which. And so I would just say, I think we've had a smaller pool than we tend to have in this hiring process. We started in June with posting and working with HR to get that out, and we're just, took that amount of time to find the best candidates for the fit. And I also think the, the part-time nature of the work with the high deductible benefit plan perhaps wasn't the most attractive, you know, I think it, I didn't do an in-depth analysis on that, but some of that feedback came out. And then, of course, the cost of living to, for candidates to move here was a challenge that I saw.
Yeah, certainly what we lacked in quantity, we more than made up in quality. People like Amy joining us, and my assistant was also, can I say stolen, or, I don't know what the right term is. Anyway, my assistant is now one of the Public Health Specialists, Lindsay Seibel, and we have another colleague who's also excellent. And we think, I think in this situation, the main challenge that you rightfully raised, one, we underestimated to some extent the full-year nature of this job. You know, like, there is work that gets done in school buildings, and then there's work that also gets done year-round in preparations and planning and setting the foundation. So we, I, I should own it, I underestimated that, which we're hoping to work through, and if we are not able to, then bring it to your attention for next year. The other is, of course, what Jessica just mentioned around the processes, protocols, HR processes that we have in place for part-time work and what have you, and that's something else that I personally underestimated as well.
I think it's good to note, too, that we're looking for a candidate that can fit into two different systems, that they both can navigate a school system and they can navigate Deschutes County Health Services, because they're really, in a sense, employed by both. And so we're looking for fit by that school staff, and we want to make sure our school staff are involved in the hiring process. And so that just makes, takes it a little bit longer to find that right fit.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So what, I think you referenced CDC. How do you decide what the criteria is for a healthy school? Who gives the input on that?
For which schools get included in Healthy Schools, or is it what, like, what criteria would... So there is a tool that we're using from the School Health, from the CDC, which is the School Health Index, and it's a 250-page document that is basically a measurement tool. That is all of, every research that's done on school-based practices. It is, that tool tells us what gaps they would have in those best practices, and then we would do a prioritization process, which is led through that tool, to select which ones to focus on. And so that's the foundation of what our program is, for having this Public Health Specialist lead the school in that assessment prioritization and planning process.
So there's a common denominator to our approach. We have to have a standardized approach. At the same time, it's customized to the needs of that particular community. And there are dozens and dozens of priorities that can come up, but we don't have the resources to deal with all of them, nor should we, frankly. So we prioritize based on burden of harmful behavior and disease, and come up with five or six key priorities for us to focus on, and reduce the burden on them and the community.
And you gave some numbers on students, or like, there was a number of 100, and then there's 11 hours of instruction for time relief. Is this, are these kids that have acted out, or are they, is the general population get a shot before they act out, or how do we get people involved?
The latter. So this program is really aiming to fill the tier-one needs, which is universal. So we're aiming to do everything that we can upstream and available to all students. And we're working in partnership with the other school staff members that provide tier-two and tier-three level supports. And when you mentioned the individualized, or students who may have acted out, that would be your tier-three level, and so we're really doing a continuum of care, if you will. But our program is specifically aiming to be upstream and that universal approach. So we're aiming to get in front of it with the health education.
So this will be integrated into the curriculum?
Yes, and it's part of the curriculum already. We're helping to fill some gaps for the staff. When we did an assessment of the health educators' confidence in teaching certain subjects, suicide prevention was the one that they felt less confidence in, and likely that's because of the risk of, you know, adverse effects with that education. And so it really needs to be done with best practices. And I think some of that makes some health ed teachers uncomfortable, and that's what we're addressing in our practices, is making sure it's delivered with assurance for quality, and then working with the teachers to build their confidence so that they can teach it on their own, once they've had some of that support for them.
And so is the overall approach to, your commitment is to get integrated into the school system, it's not to provide the services to be the resource to integrate it into the system?
Yes, in the program plan, there's a really good description of the core capacity of school health improvements, and they find that having a dedicated coordinator, at least .5 FTE, is the key enabling factor of having a sustainable school health improvement process. And so we're providing that .5 FTE to coordinate this process. It's really a collaborative approach, so that it's not one person, but it's really school health improvements in every aspect of the school, and really reaching every student, every family, and the whole community through that.
And just a reminder that this, the lens is prevention. We want to make sure we reach them before it's too late, right? So that's critical. You know, the other piece of this, and I think this was important to many of you in this room when we were having this discussion, really, one of the foundations or pillars in all this is engagement with parents. Because, you know, this program does not obviate the responsibility from our parental role in our kids' well-being. So they're very much involved in the process from A to Z. Commissioner?
When we heard the presentation in, at the Budget Committee hearings in June, there was a, like, a long-term vision or intention of reaching from the high school into the feeder schools? Is that like a next-year intention, or is that like three or four years in, or...
We, we aim to get into the middle schools as soon as possible, but with the delayed start for the Public Health Specialists, we wanted to start them at the high schools and really build their competency at the high school level, and then start working into the middle school level. It'll likely work to where, at the end of the school year, we'll start working in the middle schools, which is nice because we'll be transitioning eighth graders into the high school for the next year, so it kind of gives us a natural progression. And then, once we've really established each school's kind of flow at the high school and middle school level, there'll be activities that we can start reaching down into the elementary school level to do some activities, again, around probably transitioning into middle school.
And one of the things, Phil, as we think about our high schools and middle schools, one of the core staff groups that our prevention specialists work with are health teachers. Our elementary schools don't have dedicated health teachers, it's the classroom teachers. So helping to train and prepare resources for general classroom teachers at the elementary level will be summer work going into the fall, because it's a, it's a little bit of a different ballgame.
And it didn't mention this in the slides, it was one of the ones that we cut out, just to make sure that we could squeeze it in the amount of time, but we are doing district-level activities. So we have the Public Health Specialists at the schools, but I'm also working at the district level akin to a district staff member, and working with a lot of district staff in social-emotional learning, in the health education curricula review, and professional development, and also working on some equity initiatives. And so we are aligned at the district level, too, and providing supports at that level.
All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Thank you. Who went to their high school reunion? See? You've got something to show off?
All right, Kathleen, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Oh, I threw a couple of slides together just to kind of address some of the data. I'll be, Mike doesn't use his. Okay, so, Kathleen Hindman, I'm the Deschutes County HR Director, just for the record, and wanted to let you know that I do have a couple of slides to kind of go over. It's really just to kind of address the data, so if folks are following along, they can kind of see what I've presented or put in memo form here. So I was asked to kind of talk about the impacts of labor shortage, and just to kind of actually touch base, I think that the program that was just reported on, they were very kind in talking about kind of, you know, the, finding their ideal candidates. I think they've found some great people. It took them a while, and we'll kind of look through, and the numbers support why their applicant pools are so low. And then the other piece is that, it's just, it's different, right? Hiring a, Deschutes County is not set up to hire sort of that type of seasonal employee, and so there's been a lot of work to go into looking at how we can do that and mirror that school. In fact, I've talked to the HR folks over at the school quite a bit on that. So, you know, it's just one of those things that we are, you know, working on in HR. So I think we may have all heard about this great resignation that's existing right now, and I've kind of heard it, you know, referenced as the great resignation. I think that, I like the term "the great realignment" a little better, because I think great resignation kind of implies that people are just leaving. And I think it's really, it's more complex than that, right? And that we have not just people leaving, but we also have people moving. And that's what we're going to see a lot in our organization as we go through this data here. But, you know, the, most employees haven't really left the workforce in totality, but they've left maybe their employer to find a new role that more closely aligns with their needs and values. We've all had some time to really sort of think and sort of, you know, existentially figure out what I need to do with myself and my life, and that really has kind of come out in how people work and where they work. So what does this look like for Deschutes County? Well, if we look at our turnover for FY '20, '21, and '22, and I'm going to say that's 22-year to date, let's see, I've got, all employees. So I have the department detail, you also have the department detail in your packets as well, but really, I'm just going to kind of speak to the grand totals right now. And we have, you know, we've seen about an 8%, 9% turnover rate for the last few years, and that's kind of standard for us, under 10. And it's not, you know, some level of turnover is important and healthy, and then we look at the turnover percentage for FY '22, and year-to-date, we're sitting at about 6%. But actually, if you project that out to the end of this year, that would actually, if we run at the same level, we'd be at 14% turnover, which is quite a bit higher than we're accustomed to seeing. The other piece that I think is important, because it's going to impact this churn that we'll talk about in a moment, is our supervisor turnover. So, you know, we're at the 3.8% in FY '20. We saw a big jump in that in FY '21, up to 9.2%. And then, here we are, sitting at 2.7 at this time of year, which projected, again, would take us to about 6.5%. So it's a little higher than we'd like to see in the supervisor area. Supervisor turnover tends to be a greater impact to the department's stability, so this number trending down is welcome news from last year, but it's still kind of a little higher than we'd like to see. So turnover data reflects, let's see, we've got supervisor data there. So the turnover data is really just people who've left, right? We see that our retirements are a little down right now in terms of our numbers where we're trending, but we're definitely going to see those probably pick up as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. But what we see in our churn comparison, so, I'll go over to that. Our churn analysis looks at not just the people who've left the organization, but the people who've moved within the organization. And so this is important, because it talks about the disruption, right? That a vacancy fills. And, you know, promotions are great, moving people within organizations is great, but let's be aware that it does cause disruption. So there is sort of a repair period of that. Disruption's not always bad, it's just, it is. And so as we look, our churn analysis shows that in FY '21, we experienced the greatest impact on our staffing, and our experience mirrors kind of, you know, what's happening in the country in general. However, local government tends to lag by a few months or so, so it's actually kind of nice to see what's going on in the country, to know that that's kind of what we'll be seeing. And those numbers do support that. So in HR's review of the churn reporting, we generally see similar experience for the individual departments and offices. and offices, as we do with the all-department data above. It's kind of why I focused on that. But I will say that, you know, for example, Community Development Department has a slightly higher churn rate in FY 22. And that makes sense, right? Because we're seeing that sort of cascading of leadership. For instance, you know, Nick in your new role, Peter in his new role, and then kind of backfilling down that. And that takes time, right? So you're going to have that disruption over a period of time. So filling one role... Yeah, yeah, it's Nick's fault.
I broke the law, Jim.
So, you know, so, so we do, we do see that. So we've got this sort of, let's say, backlog that we're trying to work through from FY 21. And here we are in FY 22, and it's not an improved labor market by any means. And so we have more work that we're doing. The FTE analysis, here's another component to kind of where we are. And I actually don't think I have this on my slides. Maybe I do. Let's see. Oh, well, here's a chart for folks who like charts. So our FTE analysis in FY 20, we had, you know, 1,043 budget FTE. Of course, in 21, we increased that, but, you know, by 3%. So we're kind of accustomed to that, 23, 29. And then in FY 22, we actually increased that by 83 people. So not only did we have the sort of lag from this churn that we were working on, but now we actually have 83 more people to try and recruit for again in this sort of difficult time. So we're seeing, you know, kind of these larger numbers impacting it.
And let's take a moment, and you know, this is the Budget Committee, since we passed our budget, it seems like every week we've been adding FTE or a couple FTE.
Yes.
I mean, it's just that the moment we're in, the Health Department's coming in, the state legislator, Biennium, putting the program elements together, Measure 110, just everything, every time we turn around and have a board meeting, somebody's saying, oh, we've got justification for a few more FTE. So not that it's a bad thing, but it has definitely grown all of a sudden.
And it's across departments. I mean,
Oh, yeah.
There are a lot of Health Department.
Oh, yeah, Community Development.
Community Development, you know, a lot of places for, and there's just a demand for services.
Yep, absolutely. And adding more FTE to support county services is, you know, crucial for us to provide those services. But it does sort of create or add to that increase in number of positions to recruit for and fill. So, you know, these factors really contribute to the greater, the normal need to fill our vacant positions sort of quickly. And we're already in a highly competitive labor market. So we have these sort of two pieces that, that we're living with. So kind of real quickly, actually, before we head into that, I'll just make a couple of comments on who's leaving Deschutes County. So the employee turnover analysis reporting on years of service, and I don't have any charts on this. This is something that we've looked at recently, you know, still sort of shows that folks are leaving in the one to five years. And that's actually increased from about 50% of existing, exiting employees to about 60% of exiting employees. And so, you know, a good majority of the workforce is exploring options, and they're filled, and will likely move around a few times before maybe landing in a longer-term place, or maybe not landing, right? But efforts made to reduce that turnover at this level definitely would benefit, you know, county operations, if we could kind of, you know, keep folks on a little longer than that. The county has made effort to collect information from exiting employees to find out, you know, why are you leaving? And the reporting on the reasons, so this is really what reason employees are giving us that they're leaving, shows that they're leaving for other employment, personal reasons, or they'll say resignation, which means that they're not willing to give us anything more than that. And, you know, it hasn't changed dramatically in the last three years. So when we looked at kind of over the last three years, where that has moved, the exit interviews kind of still use those three categories as the largest. Oh, let's see. So, you know, in reviewing this, HR has gleaned that many employees point to outside opportunity and then differences with leadership when we look at the actual exit interview data as, as the reasons for, you know, moving on, right? And, and this is actually pretty common in terms of, you know, HR areas. Why, why do people leave employment? A lot of folks say it's always for money. We actually don't see that in our exit data as being the number one reason. But we do see opportunity, right, for advancement, as well as maybe differences with new leadership. And so let's think back to, we just have that churn of supervisors, where we're adding new supervisors. That's new leadership. And so there's bound to be some folks who are going to leave with new leadership, right? It's just part of, part of the cycle. Okay, so our recruitment analysis. How is the county recruiting efforts impacting all of this? Well, we have the full detail here, which is a lot of data, but just to kind of look, the analysis shows that in, uses 2019 as a benchmark to review the impacts of the pandemic and the labor shortage on our recruiting efforts. In 2020, the county held steady in the number of recruitments that we posted. So we posted 155 recruitments in 2019, and 153 in 2020. However, we saw 32% drop in the number of applications received per recruitment. So that's where that applicant pool, which used to look, you know, used to get complaints from hiring managers, oh, there's too many applicants to go through. I'm not really hearing that any longer, because there just isn't. And so we're actually now, in contrast to calendar year 2021, the number of recruitments we posted was 251. So that's a pretty big jump. In fact, it's about 64% over what we posted in 2020. Yet, our total applications received is down. And so our applications per recruitment has gone down to about 16, which is about 43% reduction. So here we are with the increase in recruitments, the increase in the budget at FTE, and then playing catch-up from the churn in FY 21, and we have less of an applicant pool to sort of choose from. I don't think that there's necessarily a lack of quality. I mean, we heard before that we're definitely seeing those applicants, you know, but it is things like, you know, housing market does play an effect. Also, people leaving because of the housing market, not because it's not necessarily, it's interesting. I have folks who have called and said, you know, I own a home, but I could sell it really well right now and move somewhere cheaper. And so, you know, I'm looking at that. Can you talk to me about what opportunities are available for me if I choose to go that route? So there's, there's folks, you know, the, the labor market in general, in multiple ways, is impacting us. So how are departments addressing this, right? So we've got less, less, and less applicants coming in. And, you know, we're really focused on retaining the remarkable employees that we already have, filling our vacancies with employees that are focused on our mission and values. I think that we're still really, you know, pushing for that. And so the county has gotten a little creative with the help of departments and implemented like a sign-on and a retention bonus. I never thought governments would be issuing bonuses, but you can't, you see them everywhere right now. So we've actually brought those on, and specifically for like our heart, some of our hard-to-fill, so the Health Services Crisis Program or a 911 dispatcher is offering those bonuses to get folks in. It does have a requirement that they stay for 24 months, or they'll have to repay a portion of that. And we do have some folks who have originally signed on with that, but actually are now leaving. So while we are seeing applicants, for instance, in our MCAT postings, which we haven't really seen in a long time, and, you know, ideally, it's because of that bonus offer. We do see some folks who have chosen to move on still, even though they have that, that payback component. So, you know, it, it works to a degree. The Sheriff's Office has established a lateral hire program to attract deputies to apply for positions, and then also to be competitive with other agencies locally and around the state. So we know that other agencies are doing the same thing, posting specifically for laterals. That's one, one approach. Recruitments are more often being reopened in an attempt to either increase or improve those applicant pools, right? Going back out multiple times. We're also increasing branding to bring awareness to the county employment through more avenues, like of social media, diverse advertising, word of mouth, and, you know, all in an effort to attract more applicants. You know, it, it's not uncommon to hear a hiring manager say, hey, I met someone really great the other day when I was shopping, and I gave him my card and told him to apply, right? I mean, we're getting, we're definitely doing all, all avenues. We have some TikTok ads, thanks to Whitney. And so we're getting, you know, we're, we're trying to get out there. Executive leadership teams discussing, you know, what can we do with policies to attract and retain? And one is, you know, telework policy. So what are we going to look like?
Do we do any active strategic rating of other employers?
Say that again, Mike?
Do we go rob employees?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Oh, that, that's...
Isn't that what a lateral hire program? Coaching.
Coaching?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a bad saying. Just offering opportunities to these other clowns out there. Do we do that actively?
We do. I mean, we will send brochures, you know.
We have a 911 convention or something. So if you come over here, we'll give you $2,000 just to come across the county line.
Yep.
We are actively...
We, we, I mean, it's something that we do, sort of sometimes just naturally, right? In terms of being at those other, you know, conventions, setting up and advertising for lateral hire, which is a nice way of saying, I'd like to steal you to come work for me, right?
We did pay bonuses over 20 years ago. And then we did do lateral hiring. I don't know why they got rid of it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, it's, I think we're just sort of showcasing it more now, right? For sure. You know, but, but the real, I think one of the big pieces, especially in the retention, is to kind of look at allowing flexibility in how and where county employees complete their work. It's an important piece to being competitive in the employment market. I mean, we hear it all the time, applicants contacting us. Can this, you know, position be done remotely? Can I work, can I telecommute with, with this position? So, you know, we're definitely evaluating those, those pieces to kind of how Deschutes County does our work. And then sometimes out of necessity, opportunity is found. So hiring managers are being required to look at how work is being done in their department, restructuring, reorganizing due to staffing limitations. Not always for the best, right? Sometimes it's just a need. Being understaffed leads to increased workloads, creating additional stress for existing staff, and delays in projects being worked on. So it's not necessarily, I think I heard some comments earlier about are we right sizing? I will say that there's probably a tiny component of that in some areas. But what is more than likely happening is that if you probably talk to any of our hiring managers, what projects do you have on the backboard or duty or staffing is, is, you know, a list that we could go down, for sure, all of us there. And we are seeing, you know, folks who are contacting HR due to the stress that they're experiencing. And stress often leads to, you know, personnel issues, right? And so we are definitely kind of seeing the, that play out with our staff. And it's hard to, you know, sit down with an employee and say, it's, you know, we're, your, your work-life balance is extremely important to us. It's very important, your health is very important to us. But I need you to work overtime because we have to get this done. I mean, but those are kind of the conversations. And so it is really hard to really be able to model that. But yet, know that we have this short staffing situation, right? And so...
Did you happen to see any change in the number of applicants when we all got out of competition with the state of Oregon and federal government with unemployment and excess benefits? I know that in other places, like within a week of that, those things ending, our application, my applications like tripled for that. So I wonder to what extent the difficulty in hiring might come from that.
Yeah, I mean, our, our applications, our total applications are actually gone, have gone down since last year, right? Not by a ton, but, but they have. So it's, it's not, we didn't see any sort of large bump after that, for instance. But I would also say that a lot of the positions that we have here are highly skilled, right? And so, you know, for instance, our, thinking about filling our crisis program positions, right? Those are very specific people that we're trying to identify. And so it's not necessarily kind of where that, that issue was occurring, right, in terms of those folks.
I think somewhat is around the dynamics of the odd time that we're in, and, you know, all of these different things that are going on, whether with the pandemic, household finances, childcare, all of the, all the other issues that are, that are out there make it really difficult. And then just somewhat related, I'm just wondering if or what you anticipate is going to be impact if a federal mandate happens on January 5th?
Sure. So, you know, when we work through this with both Health Services, right, because we already have a mandate impacting our employees and both the Health Department, as well as in our juvenile justice. And, you know, we, we didn't see like a mass exodus for, you know, any reason.
Do you have high vaccination rates?
We did. I mean, naturally, I would say Health Services had a naturally higher vaccination rate than probably anticipated in some of our other departments or offices. And so, you know, we expect there to be impact of it. It, it kind of, I think in my mind is going to end up depending upon where we land or where the, the legislation lands with testing. And, you know, if, if someone was able to apply for a, you know, an exception to the policy, either religious or medical, and qualified, we were able to accommodate those. And so, you know, we didn't have to end anyone's employment over it. But I, I think that the testing component is going to be a really big piece to that. But I'll also point out that the cost of testing and managing that testing is going to be an impact as well.
I mean, regionally, you know, the Oregon Employment Department is, is reporting that we have more jobs now. We've, we've reached a point where we have more jobs than, you know, more people in jobs than we had pre-COVID. So, I mean, we finally kind of hit that point. So we're there, and unemployment rates are very low. So, I mean, you know, there's a, there are a lot of jobs. There's not a lot, not enough people. And, and, you know, I, I think that kind of ripples through the whole system. I mean, because we need, we have kind of a lot of higher-skilled jobs. It makes, it makes that hit differently, maybe. But one of my questions, Kathleen, was if we, if we're putting out recruitments, we're getting many fewer applicants, but they're still decent quality people? What's our, what's our success rate in landing them, right? So, you know, like, are we, are we making lots of offers and people are just turning around saying like, yeah, I got another, I have another option that I'm, I'm going to go with instead?
Yeah. And, and, you know, I would have to, we don't actually track that in HR. I think that would be, because the, the, the offer piece is handled within the department. But, you know, anecdotally, yes, we do hear that. But I would say more often, what we're actually seeing is requests for advanced steps. So offers at a higher starting in the salary scale. And, and, you know, as long as it's justified under Oregon Pay Equity, we're able to do that. But, so there's sort of a twofold piece to that, right, in terms of folks coming in asking for a higher rate of pay, but also then coming in with experience to justify that. So, you know, I would say that that's kind of the piece that, that we're seeing in HR, is an increase in those requests.
Do you think the, the high cost of housing here is a major hurdle for you?
I'd say it's a big one. I don't know that it's the major, you know, one. It's definitely a big one. In fact, you know, you'll, you'll hear applicants say things like, I, I, I own a home here already. You know, like, they're, they're aware, too, in terms of, of it being of issue. And kind of, you can see sometimes hiring managers be like, oh, ew, right? That, that's not an issue that they have to work through. But we do, we do see housing being an issue, for sure.
Do you think it is at a point where you would consider looking at housing assistance? And I don't know of any public entity in Oregon. I know some have provided housing. But I was talking to Phil earlier, like, the military, and I have kids in the military, they don't get paid squat. Thank God they have housing assistance. And it's on a sliding scale, depending upon your rank, how much you make, where you're at. You might get $3,000 in the Bay Area, $1,200 in Mississippi. And so is that something that's even crossed the radar on?
I would say not in that format necessarily, more in the getting folks in, because that's where...
More of a signing bonus?
Well, or, or in, I mean, where we've had to work with folks is, you know, we actually are creative right now with some staff who have asked, you know, we're in a different state, right? And Deschutes County's not set up to be an employer in another state. And so we've, we've worked with them to either bring them on... And so we've, we've worked with them to either bring them on through our temp agency, a staffing agency, and, and work with them while they find housing locally, right? So that's the bigger issue, is that most of them come in, or a lot of these folks come in, you know, maybe being able to afford the housing, but finding housing even. Rentals, for instance, we've had employees who are living in, you know, motels for periods of time because just access to the housing is of trouble.
Yeah, I'll just offer, Mike, Jefferson County was recruiting for a couple of department heads, and they had, they purchased a manufactured home, and they were using that as a recruiting tool. So the department head could move in, they would have something like a $3,000 signing bonus, and they could live in a, basically a rent capped place, three bedroom, two bathroom, up to a year as they looked for that housing, so. It's not a new concept at all. I'm wide open to it.
Forty years ago, Santa Barbara was.
Exactly.
Firefly.
Yep, yep.
Kind of turn the whole thing on its, on its head or flip it the other side of the coin. I mean, we're talking about, you know, housing being a barrier. If we were able to offer a certain amount of like, you know, interim period housing, or, you know, even some, you know, a certain number of units of long-term housing, could that open up people looking at jobs in, with Deschutes County that otherwise wouldn't be? You know, I'm guessing that there are people who know how much it costs to live here and are not even considering looking for a job here. But if suddenly you said, hey, if you, if you're, if you've got the skills to come work for us, we will essentially guarantee you a place to live for, you know, a couple of years. I mean, could that kind of open up recruitment opportunities for us that we currently don't have?
You know, it might. I mean, I actually would like to talk to Jefferson County to see how successful they are kind of with their piece. It's hard because I don't know who's not applying because of that, right? That's the, that's the one piece. But it's definitely something that we could look into, I think.
Yeah, and is it scalable? I mean, you, you know, buy three or four places or something, and that's kind of a drop in the bucket compared to your problem, unless you're wanting to buy 400 houses.
Well, Zillow, maybe Zillow bought some here, and we can start picking them up from Zillow. I mean, truly, I think they've got to work expanded, didn't they? Does anybody know?
It's a good question. I don't know.
I know they, like, went way into the market.
All right, any other questions?
When you were talking about the departure of supervisors, I was curious, do you have a sense of whether a lot of that is retirements? Or whether it's, you know, whether people are leaving for other reasons?
So we did see some turnover in supervisors because of retirements. We also did see kind of during that, was it FY, FY '21, where we saw kind of just the bigger churn? We saw people actually leaving at those 10 years, right? Which are probably, or likely some supervisors there. And when, we don't normally see that, right? We see most people leaving in the one to five years, and we see maybe a few leaving in the higher. But we did see some increased folks leaving there. And so, you know, it's due to retirement, probably for opportunity as well is where we saw that. And then, you know, where, where is everyone going, right? I think is kind of the question. I think that we're all going everywhere. Folks are looking at, you know, as a supervisor for 10 years, I have a lot to offer, and maybe I want to go and do it somewhere else or for something different, a different location. And so there is a lot of movement happening actually at that level. And then there's folks who are not returning to work, either, you know, due to the pandemic right now or for childcare situations as well. Finding that, oh, they can not work. So, you know, there's, I think, some different pieces feeding into that. And then also promotions, right? We saw a lot of promotions. And so we've got folks who are leaving maybe towards the top of the organization, and we see this sort of, you know, promotion ladder up, which comes with a lot of work in terms of making sure we have supervisors now who maybe haven't supervised, and we're prepping them. So great to see those folks moving into roles. But, you know, definitely work from both HR but also the department to support them and being that effective supervisor.
Okay, Kathleen, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
John, come on up.
Hi, John, you've been waiting a long time here.
Enjoyed it. Don't know what that means. When I come here, everyone flees. Oh, good to see you, John Hummel, Deschutes County District Attorney. I don't have any slides, but you were given the present of a 65-page document of some sort. So I assume you have that. Don't worry, I'm not going to read every page of it to you now. Okay, but let me just give you some highlights. Remember when we talked about the PCE report at the budget hearing? We said it'd be good to track it, and we were all in agreement on that. So I've been working with David Givens on that, and he's presented that report to you. And I, I guess I haven't asked him this explicitly, but I assume he's going to continue to track it throughout. I'd like to see him take it through for the next year or so until we get all these done. I'm pleased where we are on this. It wasn't expected you'd get all recommendations done in this time period. But as David says, 29% of the recommendations have been completed. On those, we did, of course, the biggest structural ones first, I think. And the two, the big, the big structural one that we've had, and we've talked about this. I know, I talked to former DA Dugan about this. I know former DA Flaherty wrestled with this. I've wrestled with this for my entire term, two terms. It's, how do you structure the office? It's kind of a fundamental question. And there are two ways that we saw to do it. You can have specialty teams. You can have the traffic prosecution team, the sex abuse prosecution team, the property crime team. Or you can have, or you could have just one team that does everything. And, you know, we, when I started, we had one team that did everything. And then we switched to specialized teams based on the type of crime you were prosecuting. And PCE, they felt very strongly that we should have general teams, but not one team. The office was too big, you know, someone could, a newer attorney kind of gets lost among 24 other attorneys. So they thought it was important to have two teams, but each team it does everything. And so, I tell you what, we, at the end of the day, I didn't really agree with that, but I said this, I was like, look, that was the fundamental recommendation they made. If we're going to hire this consultant, if we all think that was the best consultant, if all of their secondary recommendations were based on that. I said, well, you know what? Let's go for it. And my, and my management team supported me on that. We were all a little hesitant, but that's kind of, you ask for help, because if you're just going to do the stuff you're comfortable with, you don't need a, you know, an outside consultant for that. So we said, okay, we're going to do it. And we've done it, and it's, it's been good. It's been good. And here's why I think it's good. I alluded to this part earlier. If you have just one general team, maybe the newer people or the more introverted people, it's hard for them to ever feel comfortable in that big team. And so that's one, so we broke it up. But when you have these smaller teams, what we do is two things happen. If you were on the traffic crime team before, and now you're on a general team, you're still going to, most of your work's still going to be traffic crimes because you're good at it, you like it, you know it. But we're going to also have you do some other cases. And why is that important? Well, one, if we have a need in that other case, if our lead child sex abuse prosecutor resigns, well, if we got no one on the bench, we're in trouble. Well, we got this traffic crime guy, but he was doing 20% of his caseload was child sex abuse. Okay, we can shift him over. So you're better able to fill holes. Two, it helps with burnout. I don't care if you say you just love this one area, you want to do this area forever. You think that now, you're going to get tired of it, if that's all you do. By giving you some other things to do, too, it's better on retention, I think, because you're not going to get burned out. And also, when you just want to try something new, hey, John, I've been focusing on traffic crimes, but I'd like to do some more of this. You know, I've been exposed to it on this, this new team format. Okay, we can, we can shift you around. And so it's worked out really great. And the second piece of that was, well, if you're now going to have two teams instead of like the one team that we had, well, you should have a supervisor of each team. Because remember, we would talk a lot during our budget committee meetings, my chief deputies, Steve and Mary, they had too much on their plate. They were really good on working with me on big policy stuff. They were good with working with me on the budget. When they had to get down in the weeds and mentor and coach, this had so much on their plate, it was hard to do. And so you all approved a new supervisor position. Well, not hiring new attorneys, but elevating attorneys to a supervisor role. And it's been great. It's been really good for two reasons. This is actually everything the consultant said, but it's come into fruition. The consultant was great. One reason is what I just said, they're better able to coach and mentor. And, I mean, this is a harsh thing to say, but you know, kind of quality control too. You know, you can get a better sense of what people are doing, the closer you get to their work. That's one. But two, we gave opportunities for advancement in our office. I mean, when there's an attorney who's been in our office six, seven, eight years, they look up, we all feel that Steve Gunnels and Mary Anderson have been there forever, which almost, it's almost like they've been here forever. But they're in their early 50s. They might have another decade to go. I hope they have two decades to go. So if you're an attorney who, you're like, there's no promotion, there's nothing. So I'm going to, I got to go out, or I'm going to stay and be miserable. We all opened up these mid-level of promotion opportunities. And there was great interest in that. And we did a full internal recruitment, we interviewed, and now actually, I'm going to, I'm going to undercut myself here a bit, one of those supervisors just left. It was for another reason, not burnout in the office. I'm very confident of that. I won't share his personal reasons, but he had something else going on in his life. But then we opened that up for recruitment, tons of interest in that. I've got four people in the office who want to jump into that because they saw what it's done for our office. So I'm really pleased with that. So those ones have been implemented underway, and they're going to happen soon. 38% are underway. Caseload dashboards, that was recommended by the consultant, and now our supervisors are clamoring for it. Like, they want to be better, be better able to track their, their teams. And so that's, that's happening, that's going to get done. One thing that hasn't happened yet, and it's just kind of a structural reason. I don't know if you recall this, but one area where I respectfully disagreed with the consultant, PCE said we should have a, an additional IT person. And I said, I didn't think we needed that because, one, well, one, a lot of, the reason they recommended it was a lot of their recommendations are based on revamping our IT to better communicate within the office and to better communicate with law enforcement. I said no because we had a grant application out there with the federal government, the Bureau of Justice Assistance, that I was very confident, cautiously confident, but extremely confident we would get. And I still think we're going to get it. They have really dragged their feet on this. We are hearing it's going to be any week now that we'll get a decision. And so if we get that, I'll still feel that we did not need that full-time position. But it has pushed back some of that IT work, so we'll know soon. If we don't get that position, we can talk about that during the, if we don't get that grant, we can talk about it in the budget hearings. But I'm not going to go through this entire document, but I feel like we're on track, we're on the pace we want to be on. And what we have implemented is working really great. And so thank you to the committee for supporting the idea of this consultant. And I tell you, a lot of the recommendations I'd be, I could say, yeah, sure, I knew that one. But some of them, like, wow, I mean, just really great fundamental stuff that I would have never thought about without the consultant. So happy to answer any questions from you. And it's fine if you don't have any too. I mean, David really did well on this.
And I'll just acknowledge, yeah, that was a long path, wasn't it? Thanks for participating.
You stuck with me, yeah, it was, thank you.
Centers for Excellence coming in, I mean, because we were talking about it years ago, we should bring in somebody, you know.
Yeah.
It's been quite a, quite a long journey and getting this going. It's great to see the, you know, Audit Committee to be able to take this and really say, oh, well, now that we have this, let's do some analysis.
Yeah, it's working.
Got a pie chart on the things that are delivered and.
And I can tell you, listening to Kathleen, Kathleen's laugh, good for her. Hopefully she's home by now. Listening to Kathleen's presentation, just to give you from a department head perspective, I told you, one of our DA supervisors recently resigned, and we're recruiting. And boy, I've seen the quantity of applicants go significantly down and, you know, the quality also. And what I started doing, I started picking up the phone, and I've asked my management team to do it. We're calling into other DA offices around the state and to other defense attorney firms around the state. We placed about, I'd say 15 calls. None of them bit, and almost every one said a variation of, I can't afford to live there.
You're not opposed to poaching?
Not at all. No, 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 no. But the cost of living is an issue. And, I mean, and Bill, what you say, I get it. I mean, I, I love the, hey, you get a house, but are we going to buy 600 houses? I mean, so I don't know what to do. I think we're going to, we're going to get, we're going to get someone out of this pool, I think. But it's like, we might be near, like, if I open up something in a few months, maybe the wells run dry. I think we're just barely, barely hanging on right now. So it's an issue. I'm not giving you any new intel. I just want to tell you, I'm seeing it in our office. Okay? Yeah? Anyone? Thanks, all right?
John, you said you're not, you've said you're not going to run for reelection?
Yeah.
You have concerns about continuity in, in terms of implementing the recommendations of the PCE, you know, after your departure from office?
Yeah, it's a fair question.
You feel like you've got lots of time still to implement a lot more of what's in here?
Yeah, maybe I, kind of, I'm an expert witness on what Kathleen was saying in two regards, recruiting but also retention. Like, I'm leaving, right? Why am I leaving? So I see it from both ends. But I'm not worried at all. I felt good. I hope you've all seen that I've worked closely with Steve Gunnels and Mary Anderson. You see Mary more often, but Steve works just as closely with me. I don't, we don't tip, put our fingers on scales of elections at all as a department head. I don't do that. But as of now, Steve Gunnels is the only person that's filed. If Steve wins, you know, I'll, I'll be here overlapping with him for months. And he's been in our office over 25 years. He's fully versed in all these recommendations. He's helping implement them, so I would have no concern. Now, if someone else runs and they beat Steve, I'll also overlap with them and have, and be able to work with them with this. Now, they may not want to implement these. Now, you know, so then there'd be that. But if, if the new person wants to implement these recommendations, I have no concern about having a seamless transition there. And I would make that a priority. Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. It's easy when I'm here not asking for money. I like it. Yeah, right? Yeah. All right, thanks, everyone. We'll see you.
Eric, I guess you're back up.
Yes, thank you. And joining me is Molly Wells, darling, from our Health Services Department. Molly is a program manager and is working with the, on homeless issues for Health Services. So my plan was just to give a quick summary of the county's efforts, mainly the joint office, application with the city of Bend, and also to touch on ARP funding approvals related to homelessness. Does that work for the committee? I understand that we're a little bit behind. Okay. So the first thing I wanted to talk about is the joint office. Representative Jason Krupp is introducing legislation where five pilot programs or communities will be identified. Each community will receive a million dollars in funding for a two-year pilot program to stand up a joint homelessness office to work on, on these type of issues. Really, the goal of the pilot program, as identified by the draft legislation, is to have a local coordinated homeless response system, to have a five-year strategic plan with specific deliverables, to work on long-term funding to support the office. It's a, the million dollars is a one-time, one-time funding from the state, and work with state and federal government to identify other sources of funding for, to address homelessness. Last week, the Board of County Commissioners and the City of Bend signed on to a joint letter indicating interest. letter indicating interest to apply for, to be one of the five pilot programs. The legislation will be introduced in the, in the short session, and so we should know sometime in February or March about, about the office. In addition, there's a emergency homeless task force spearheaded by the City of Bend, and also Deschutes County is, is at the table. Commissioner Phil Cheng is co-chairing that group with City Councilor Perkins. And that group has been working to develop a, a five-year plan, or strategic plan on homelessness. So that's one piece. Any questions about the joint office?
Is that a million dollars for one year, two years, three years?
For two years.
Two years, so a half a million dollars of staff costs per year?
Yes.
So I'd acknowledge, I mean, this-
You don't have to use it all on personnel, I don't think.
No, it's, it's for several, several FTEs and other, other costs, such as just office costs. Also, to bring in people who have lived experience and to pay them for their expert, or for their knowledge.
I mean, I think, I think we could turn around and invest some of it in some of the, you know, homeless service providers who we already have in the, in the region to kind of build their capacity as well. Is that, does that-
It's not, it's not intended directly for services.
But things like, I mean, if, if like Bethlehem Inn needed to do strategic planning, or there were certain kinds of training and mentorship for our locals, there's, there's a number of them who are speaking, or are like in close contact with Rogue Retreat down in the, in the Rogue Valley. And, you know, Rogue, Rogue Retreat could teach our people and how to do lots of, lots of things, and help them kind of plan to set, set up projects and initiatives, for example. Those, those are some of the kinds of things I was, I was thinking about. If we need to add capacity, or if we, yeah, if we need to, you know, put money into things to add capacity in the long run.
Yes.
It may not be, it may not all be a, like, joint office director, it might, some of it might be, you know, adding capacity, short-term capacity in certain ways to kind of help us get set up for success in the long term.
That's correct. I have the-
It depends on whoever you hire and when they come up with these plans. But the concern, and I know this is, you guys are discussing this now with the City of Bend, I take it, is there any discussion gonna be given, do once this two million, once this million dollars is gone, are you gonna say, yep, we're gonna continue it if it's a success on equal financial basis? Or is it gonna be, well, we'll think about it, we'll let you know in two years?
Part of the strategic plan is a commitment to explore funding needs. So I mean-
Funding for the position, positions, or for solutions?
I think both. But I, I mean, if we, if we go into this, we set up a joint office temporarily to kind of, you know, figure out funding for long-term solutions, identify gaps, help people, you know, get going to fill those gaps, and, you know, fiddle with, fiddle with some policies that need to be fiddled with to enable things to happen. And we don't need a joint office after two years, then, then, you know, the focus could be on, on long-term, you know, funding for, you know, for the kinds of service and facility provision that we need. I, you know, I, I can't-
Hard to say.
It's, it is hard to say, yeah. I don't think we need to have a joint office just to have a joint office, though. I definitely see some specific roles and functions that could play in the near term, though.
Yeah, I'd just like to see joint financial support.
Yeah. And, and the other, the other, just, just so you all know, the other cities are, are considering participating in this as well. It, you need a minimum of one city and one county, but it could, I think we're hearing that there might be, you know, more, some other kind of larger regional scale efforts.
You don't have to move it back down.
I mean, you know, if, if, to participate in, in coordination and planning, if someone else is, is footing the bill, it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's not a bad, not a bad deal.
The other guy pay for it.
Yeah. But the Central Oregon Cities Organization, they, you know, they collectively wrote a letter expressing interest in this.
Thank you.
So remember, this is a legislative concept, so it's not a done deal yet, this is an idea that's gonna go into legislative session next year. So it's time to really be engaged, to understand what's being proposed, you know, maybe optimize the, the concept, or whatever we can do there. So we'll see where that goes in February next year.
They won't send any money for a couple of years then?
Well, yeah, I mean, so that's it, you know, it's an idea, it's, it's a, you know, an effort.
Go into the short term.
February.
Molly, did you want to add- I think it's a big, a big function of, you know, land use is, is the trick here, I think. You know, and this is a debatable item. Well, we have people that are setting up in our community, and they don't have places to be, but we'll start spending money on the situation. It still boils down to land use, I think, so I'm just, there's another aspect to this. Here's, here's a million dollars, but we're not gonna allow land use changes possibly. It gets kind of weird. So, you know, we'll see.
Molly, did you want to add anything?
Well, I, other than to say that, you know, I think this office really is about coordinating all of our efforts, and up until this point, we've really all been, you know, working kind of in silos, so this will help bring us all together as a region, and also really to, to focus on those high-level policies, legislation, land use, funding, et cetera. So that is why I think we need the joint office to make some good headway along those lines.
All right. We're happy to answer any more questions, but we just want to be aware of the time, and, and there's one more item for, for the Budget Committee with the assumptions.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we're running a little bit behind, we're gonna try to catch up, we're not gonna catch up, but we'll try to, try to keep this before 6:00 PM. Just two, just a couple more items. One is, we're gonna go through the assumptions for next year's budget, for the FY23 budget. You'll see that more again as we get into budget building and during Budget Week. And also, a concept about perhaps another way to deal, to address Budget Week this coming budget cycle. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dan and Betsy.
Thank you, Greg. As Greg said, we'll just cruise through this really quick. So the FY23 assumptions, they are starting on page, what is this here? Page nine of your packet that you received earlier. The assessed value increase, the average since 2014 has been five and a half percent, and that's what we're kind of conservatively gonna go for in FY23. So that'll make up some of our revenue there. Our FY22 actuals were 5.65%, but like I said, for 23, we're conservatively estimating 5.5%. Or 5.55. Cost of living, as Patty spoke to and others, the inflation is, is quite high this year. We'd be all incredibly surprised if we didn't max out basically the contract COLAs, which is 3.5% for almost all of them. I assume that the actual inflation level for January to January, which is how we do it, will probably be around six or seven percent. That's where it's been trending. Greg spoke to PRS rates earlier, there's no change for this current fiscal year. We have included the 1.82% rate credit from the new side account from the state there. Moving on to health insurance, there is a potential need to make modest rate increases in fiscal year 23, and again, that would be zero to 2% max, and that would be for both the department and, and the employee itself, so. Lastly, we have property tax rates, no change for FY22 right now in the FY23 assumption. Our interest earnings are very minimal, I would almost skip it, the current pool rate is .45, and portfolio rate is 65% and declining. Labor contracts, we have sheriff's office, 911, and I think we might have adult parole and probation later on as well. We expect general fund transfers to be similar to fiscal year 22, and the general county reserve transfer to be determined as of yet. And we'll continue to, continue to review our internal service funds in terms of their balances and contingency requirement. And then, as Greg spoke to, we looked into some new calendar ideas for Budget Week, and Betsy Tucker has done an excellent job on this, so I'll pass it off to her.
What's the labor contracts required that are not under negotiations?
AFSCME is not under negotiations.
What's their contract called?
Eric can speak more to that, he was-
It is, I think it's one and a half to three and a half.
Well, but it goes to one to four.
Yeah.
Let me look it up.
Correct?
Yeah, years two, three, and four.
And they did get a retroactive 1.5% COLA as well in their contract.
So what are we gonna budget for, four?
Three and a half.
It's, there was a, Eric, Eric will have the specifics, but there was a, a, like a set number for this year that was agreed upon, and then next year, it's one to, one and a half to three and a half, or?
Three and a half.
It goes only up to three and a half, and then the next year, it can go, you know, the range goes one to four. So we're, we're kind of, what we set up was a bigger and bigger range over time, but, you know, it, it'll be whatever, whatever the actual CPI is. So, I mean, I, you know, I, I feel like, you know, setting a ceiling of four is, you know, if, if the CPI never gets to four, then you're, you're not paying for it. So I, you know, I, I feel like putting that bigger range is actually a, a, a good thing. And then if, if this year, you know, inflation is actually like six or seven percent, then you, and we're only getting partway there.
So how much inflation is medical?
How much is what?
Inflation is medical.
Everything you read by the news, it's vehicles-
Gas and food.
Gas, food, yes, those three are the main.
I would imagine for all urban consumers, including medical, it'll be somewhere around seven percent, but, but we will be budgeting, should it come in at seven percent, we'll be budgeting 3.5, is that, that's the max for the contracts.
All right. So, I was tasked with researching some comparable agencies, and bringing back some information about the way they structure their Budget Committee Presentation Weeks. I was looking at the dates that they hold their meetings, the amount of time they spend on their meetings, and just some structural information about the meetings. So, to start, I did a little research on the last Deschutes County budget meeting, which was a great intro to, to my upcoming job here. And we, as you know, we spend about four days on the process, and it totals about 30 hours for the, for the week. Compare that with three of the four agencies I looked at, they spend two to three days on their Budget Committee process, they hold them in April or May, and spend about eight to 10 hours on the entire process. And I should add that that includes public comment, the presentations, and then the deliberation. So, like I said, Deschutes County spends about 30 hours. One of the interesting items was I've decided to add an agency, and I looked into Multnomah County's process. They have a $2.8 billion budget, and we spend roughly the same amount of time that they do on their Budget Committee process.
People look how screwed up they are.
I didn't look into that. So, uh-
They're dysfunctional.
So I have a couple recommendations, and it's not so much about cutting down the time, although that certainly is something to consider. It's really just, how can we optimize the week so that the decision-makers, you, are getting the most meaningful information access to that? And I have three recommendations, well, we have three recommendations to offer, and one of those being that we reduce the department presentation times, depending on departments, depending on funds, but we look at that a little bit closer and maybe tailor the amount of time that they're getting for their presentation. And that we consider only presenting funds that have a significant budget change, a special request ask, or a notable item to, that the Budget Committee just needs to be aware of. That could allow us to hold the Budget Committee Week in three days. So two days of presentations, and then a third day where we would review special requests and then deliberate. And then the final recommendation that I'd like to suggest is that we start the Budget Week, hearing from Greg, our CFO, with a high-level financial overview, just to really lay a foundation for the presentations, to kind of highlight some of those issues that you'll be hearing about from the funds and departments, and to really set the stage for the process. So I wanted to put those out there and ask you to consider them, and perhaps give them a try for the next budget process.
And if I could just offer one other suggestion, was to move it prior to Memorial Day weekend.
Yes, thank you, I forgot to add that. We would like to recommend that we hold the presentations the, before Memorial Weekend.
So just one other point, too, to throw in here, is, is we keep track of each process we go through, and we make some notes, and we're always looking at ways of adjusting and making changes so that it improves the process. And this was one of the items that came out of last, during Budget Week, is, could we look at, is there ways we can look at saving a little bit of time, or increasing deliberation, or possibly even moving it a week back? So we're a little bit further away from Memorial Week. So thank you, Betsy, for doing that, that was great work. And this is just an item for your consideration and discussion, so we wanted to throw that out there.
Can I just ask, in terms of the, in terms of those comps, those comparables, I mean, are we talking about jurisdictions that have the same level of complexity that we do? You know, so much of the, so much of the funding that, that we're talking about is, is processed through many, many districts. So I mean, that's one, one kind of, like, spectrum of complexity. And then, if certainly, some of our departments like Health Services, I mean, what we're trying to, what we're trying to understand during the, their presentations about, about their, their programming and their budgetary needs, I mean, that's, it's really, it's really complex, and it takes a lot of time.
So I'm still learning about all of the different counties here in Oregon. Lane County, they, their budget is double our budget, it's about 800 million for this fiscal year. They were one of the counties that spent a little more time than the other ones. They held their presentations over six days, but they were still able to do them in about 17 hours. So-
I'd rather they meet a couple hours a day.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, they-
I'd rather they meet 10 hours and get it done, and spread it over five days at two hours.
So I think, you know, that, I mean, that's a great question, but I do think that, that we still have a little room for improvement, especially when you think about, now, Multnomah County is, I'm sure, quite complex, and we're meeting about the same amount of time that they're meeting. So-
And one of the-
But what's their credit rating and what's ours? Truly. What's our credit rating now? Did we-
I don't know what their credit rating is.
Okay, but I mean, ours is going up, and we have a lot of money to manage here, and I feel it's such an important part of what we do, and especially with this team of people. And Mike, maybe you want to work, you know, like, 14 hours in one day?
No, I don't want to do that.
But, you know, we have an, we, what is it, are we Moody's AA+ or something like that? And, yeah, I'd like to know what their credit rating is, because we really do try and be incredibly fiscally responsible.
Well, one thing, Deschutes County involves their citizen members a lot more than any other municipal agency that I am aware of, you know. And I don't know that many, but in talking to my old colleagues way back then, I mean, it was a, the program budget, it's wrapped up there, they don't have a clue what's really in there, and they go wham-bam, I move to approve. We've always had a fairly active citizen involvement, and we do have some complications that other counties don't have. We don't, they don't have the insurance funds that, that we get involved with, the Health Insurance Trust Fund, and the liabilities, and the workers' comp, and all that, most of them, it's all-
Yeah, most of them have their own issue.
Farmed out, they're just a little checkmark in the budget. Farmed out, and they're just a little checkmark in the budget. I personally, you know, I'm retired, you guys, you guys are working. I don't have a problem with the time, but I, I think it's not, you make that commitment, you're going to get involved there because you're representing a, you know, a section of the citizenry that's not elected. But I don't think you can get through a lot of this stuff. It is very complicated, you know, especially the health stuff. I mean, I, I'm confused. I have to talk to Phil to figure out what I'm, what I'm doing there, but I'd rather have more time than less. And I think the departments want to be, you know, they work hard in putting these budgets together. They want the governing body and the Budget Committee to, to listen to them and know what they're doing. I mean, they're proud of their departments.
One other thing...
I don't have a problem with the Labor Department. That makes sense.
Well, one thing I'd be curious about, I, it is my impression that in some other counties, commissioners function more like department, you know, they, they have, you know, commissioners are assigned direct oversight over departments. And I can imagine, then, you know, if, if there's commissioners who are responsible for certain departments, that when you come to budget time, you know, the fact that one commissioner has been watching really closely and, you know, kind of backs a budget proposal, it would require less deliberation and, and less, you know, education in some ways.
It requires some competition.
So I, I would wonder, I would wonder whether any of the jurisdictions that you looked, and I don't know, I, I wonder whether any of the jurisdictions you looked at had more of a kind of department chief kind of commissioner's, commission structure than, versus, versus what we have here, which basically all the commissioners are responsible for overseeing everything, so.
Yeah, Lane County's split up by area, you know, so it would definitely have...
Their home rule is five.
Right.
Well, districts is one thing, but like, kind of functional oversight over a certain, certain program areas.
They can be very competitive, especially when they're talking about whose road department is...
Well, I'm definitely for moving it for the week, ahead of the weekend, the three-day weekend. So that's a, that was a good idea.
And I could add that if we were to aim for three days, we would reserve a fourth day just in case, which is usually the case with any budget week. You've always got that extra day just in case something comes up, goes long. So that certainly would be a part of the recommendation, that that's reserved.
I, I can see how we could tighten up the presentations, you know, like the Road Department usually does their strategic plan, and, and we've heard that a lot. We've all been here a long time, so there's probably stuff that we don't need to hear. But what we do focus on, I believe, is more like a, you know, executive board. We don't want to get into management discussions, but on the other hand, we, we want to understand what they're doing in order that we understand the numbers that we're looking at. So to understand the program budget, and then, I know Mike always refers to the line items, it takes a while to get through that. So that's probably more of the focus that we should have, and I can understand tightening up the presentations.
Well, perhaps we continue to, you know, take this to an email. There's just one last thing here, and maybe we can do an online poll for that, too, with everybody in the room. But Health Services usually does a mid-year presentation to this committee. Last year, they did one. This year, they've proposed to do two, shorter time limits, though. They just feel like breaking out into two days is easier for folks to digest and have the questions and the timing they need to do. So that, that is also kind of the last thing on the agenda for today, to have a quick conversation or just email about that.
Yeah, I suggest we come up with a couple of draft schedules and share it with commissioners. And once we get conceptual support for commissioners, let's share it with all members, or we can share it with everybody. But just some conceptual schedules, so you can see what it, what it might look like with some tightened-up presentations. But I'm hearing support that we don't want to cut anything out at this point. I mean, tightening up is one thing, but maybe not reducing it. So we'll come up with some schedules and, and share it, so, and we will, we will plan to move it up the week before Memorial Day weekend. So we'll, we'll look at those. So I, I really appreciate your, your research and options and suggesting those. Thank you.
Start on Monday morning or Tuesday morning? I mean, because, yeah, three days to four, because either one of those could work.
Yeah, I would suggest Monday through Thursday, just because people might want to bolt early for the Memorial Day weekend on, on Friday, but...
That sounds like a really good idea, Nick. Boltin' early, yes.
I mean, if I could just say, you know, June was my, my first Budget Committee hearing. There were a lot of things I feel like we, we covered very, very in-depth and very thoroughly and spent a lot of time on. There were also a couple of items I just felt like we blasted through, you know, on the, on the last day, that discussion about, you know, that discussion about, you know, allocating TRT to the Sheriff's Office so that they didn't have to raise the rural rate. I mean, I, I felt like we, we were doing that at like 5:00 PM on Friday, and it was, it was a very rushed, rushed discussion.
And that's absolutely...
If we could, if we could, at the same time that we're looking at tightening certain things up, if we could make sure that we're leaving adequate time to, to address sticky...
Exactly. And that's exactly what we talked about, is whatever the outcome of, of the day is, is to have, give you more time for deliberations, because we don't want to see you rush any decision. We want you to have adequate time to make those important, all the decisions.
And, and part of that, and this will come out in the, in the concepts that we propose, is to give more time to some of those bigger conversations that need to happen, some of the bigger decisions. But on some of the departments that are status quo budget from year to year, does the Budget Committee want to hear, send 30 minutes on each one of those? Or if it's status quo, do we, would, do we not focus on those and only focus on the changes and the big issues, so we can really get to the meat of the budget? There's a fair amount of departments that the only change from year to year are essentially payroll-driven costs, which affect everybody. So that's just another thing to think about.
So what is the primary motivation for moving the week to ahead of Memorial Day as opposed to after?
After? I don't know.
Well, we, we talked about a couple of things. Some, some people, if they actually want to, I mean, department staff, anybody that's really participating in Budget Week, they are going to be kind of tied to the office or work over Memorial Day weekend in preparation for the next, for Budget Week as opposed to the weekend before.
And also, I would say that it really wasn't an option before because of just the amount of time it's takes, it takes us to put the proposed budget together. But with this new software, which we won't talk about even if it's on here, we've talked about it before, but that's going to give, that's going to free up some time, plus we have additional staffing resources. So we're now able to have some flexibility in moving that.
The timing, to me, is what's best for the departments and the staff. My schedule is, and I think the commissioners are going to be here regardless. What gives you the best opportunity to present the best product? Before or after? I don't know. Doesn't matter.
Well, it makes sense that, yeah, I mean, if it's a holiday weekend and you're, and you're, you're going to think about that budget prep the whole time right before the, you know, that Monday, you're not going to be relaxing if you're a department head and you're going to get somebody out there to be ready to present. So, I mean, there's value just in the flow of the, the weekend and the beginning of the summer to be able to do it that week before.
Yeah, and it's an intense process.
Yeah.
Mike and I will way more fun during his three-day weekend away from school, if I'm not preparing, not preparing for the budget hearing.
Well, I'm usually, I'm camping, but I'm flipping through the book, too. Every year, I've been doing that, and people know it. I'm sitting in a lawn chair or I'm in a camp trailer studying.
Yeah, this year, if this, if we move it up this year, you won't have to.
Yeah.
You're going to have something else in your hands, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Is that it, Greg? Very good. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.